Um.
That sounds good to me.
First time I've been able to hear in months.
I have hearing aid, but I like that.
Yeah.
I like that.
Okay, so um. The if you're in the room um and there's an emergency, we'll go out the back of the room and down the hallway in either direction to the exits. Are there any agenda changes? Okay, hearing none, we'll keep the agenda as is. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anything in the room? Anything online? Um if you're joining us online, we're not monitoring the chat. So if you want to get our attention, you should turn your video on um wave at us. Okay, we can move forward with announcements. Um I and Michael and staff and possibly others attended the city council hearings on the the comp plan and they have made a few changes and have launched another public hearing for about the twenty nine, I think um. The changes are seem to be relatively minor. They thanked us for our good work. Um there were a few wording changes. I think the biggest ones were in the the sentence at the beginning about how um climate change was the overriding principle. Um they made a few adjustments. They they weren't super pleased with the word overriding, um but I think it's.
Overriding and every.
Yeah.
Those two words were removed, which didn't didn't water it down much.
Yeah. Um and then a few other smaller things um and some typos that were caught. I don't know if you had anything else that was more substantial that you.
Oh, that's that's about it. Um we will give this to you formally at your next meeting um because under state law, just like last time, anytime that council makes any changes, you'll you'll see what those changes are and you'll have the opportunity to update your report.
Right, okay. Any other announcements? Or staff report?
Um a couple of things. Um one, um you you'll see in your packet under other business tonight that two of our neighboring communities are uh proposing some amendments to their regulations. Um Burlington's is their neighborhood code, which um is something that they've been working on for some time uh related to how they allow for um infill into existing neighborhoods. That happens to they they've sort of melded it with the Act forty seven work. And so while it wasn't created by Act forty seven, it incorporates Act forty seven and then um Colchester is also doing their first round of Act forty seven work. So just uh things to keep your eye on there. Um our team um last month put out a request for proposals for um the planning grant project that you have submitted a year ago, um which is for equity in outreach. And we have received four proposals, which is great, and um we're going to be reviewing those over the next couple of weeks and kicking off that project, which is super exciting. On the slightly less exciting front, um we were not successful in our two uh municipal planning grants and uh bylaw modernization grant applications to the state this year. So that was for um to uh help defray some of the costs of the Parks Master Plan and for the San Remo Drive Form-Based Code work. Um the funding formula uh for the municipal planning grants basically has it that two communities in Chittenden County get funded each year. We were funded last year. Um and frankly, almost all of the projects this year were related to flood resilience, um which is not a huge surprise after last year. And then the same thing on the bylaw modernization grant. I think there was only a couple hundred thousand dollars statewide and a lot of that went to um to S one hundred or flood resilience. Um so not surprising, um but still good that we put it in and um we're still planning to proceed with the Parks Master Plan um on the same timeframe schedule, so. Um anything else that you wanted to add? All right, I think that's what we got for right now.
Okay, so I think we can dive right in. Item five, the discussion of the LDR updates required by S one hundred, also known as Act forty seven and the home end of twenty twenty three. So this is a continuation of discussions we have been having the last couple of meetings. Looks like starting out with minimum lot sizes.
Yeah, so I outlined um most of what I would say today in the memo. Um we're just working forward towards actual numbers for some of these things and and where they would be applied. Uh I guess a couple of things to highlight. We decided for this to pull out um C one auto, C one air, which was already pulled out, and um C two as areas that I had proposed originally to cons- fully consolidate with the other um real similar density areas. Um but because they have pretty disparate uses that are allowed, we're now proposing that you could have C one and C one auto and C two survive as zoning districts, but they would have the same residential standards, so the same minimum lot sizes and things as the other, what I'm calling number three. Uh the number three district. So it would still have the same residential dimensional standards, but it would it would remain separate because they do have some pretty um different uses.
And just to add two words to that, we um Kelsey and I spent some time looking to see to what extent we could meld the uses and make it all work. And we found that we were going down rabbit holes that were distracting from the purpose of what the council commission is trying to accomplish now, which is to um simplify and um account for Act forty seven. And there just became too many questions of, oh, what do we do with this kind of pre-existing use? And do we want to be expanding cell storage into different parts of Shelburne Road? And it just sort of went on and on and on. And we thought, boy, that's too many, too many important conversations that will distract from the your primary goal right now.
Right, and I I think that's important. There there are important conversations to have into the future, um but they are not so directly related to the residential things that we need to accomplish for S one hundred compliance purposes, that it's worth um trying to resolve all of those questions in this con- particular conversation. We may bring it back up in the next year or so, but um for now, we'd be proposing to leave them separate.
So you're talking about just leaving those three seed districts separate.
Yeah.
But still consolidating the R districts. So I mean, you had sent out that table.
Yeah.
Do we need to kind of revisit that table at a meeting? Since it was kind of just sent.
Yes, the the table that I sent out was was just informational. It was just saying, here are the the districts that we would propose consolidating into a single district. Um and here is where they agree. Um if even if one thing was different than the others, then we said it did not agree. And so it had a blank in that in that column. Um so some of those are, I think, from our perspective, maybe fairly easy conversations that you just wouldn't allow it going forward. Um or you would allow it in all of the districts that are now considered would be considered the same. Uh but those are all conversations to be had. Um I don't think there's I guess that was one of the questions that I raised in the memo. Are there particular issues that people have at this point with different uses in those areas? Or there's particular things that you'd like to talk about? That was one of the questions that I raised. But yes, we will have to end up with a use table for each of the the one, two, three districts that result from consolidating the existing small, smaller districts.
So I guess part of why I bring it up, because you just mentioned uses and it wasn't in the packet. It it was in a separate email. So I don't know if people kind of came prepared to talk about the use table.
Okay, yeah, and it doesn't have to be.
If that would be something for another.
That can definitely be at the next meeting.
Really, that might be best, just it wasn't distributed publicly too, so.
Yep.
Maybe that's a future meeting agenda.
The use. Uh no, you're right. Yep. Um so, sorry, for today, um I do think we need to talk about the the table that I've proposed as the residential dimensional standards. Um there, you know, it's it's sort of a two-fold question, I think. There's one, do you do you like the dimensional standards that are included there? Um and whether that's yes or no, the sort of second and you know, tangential question is, what additional information do you think that you might need to feel comfortable with either the numbers that we've put in or to land on num- different numbers that you are more comfortable with? For, you know, for example, minimum lot size being X thousand square feet. We can, we can find it. We can gather additional information to to support things. Um so it's kind of both questions. It's it's how are you feeling about that table? Does is it starting to feel like it's getting somewhere or? And or what additional information are you looking for?
Um Donna and Duncan?
I guess just just a basic question, and I maybe you told us at some point. Um you've got four districts here. Is there any way to correlate what previous zoning districts were pushed into these individual numbers?
Yeah.
And and also, I I that's that's my first question. The second question is, I don't know if maybe if you could take one of these lines and kind of walk us through each number.
Absolutely.
What what it what it means and what it delineates? I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Can you put?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, I think, but um for example, on let's say zone one.
Mm hmm.
Uh you've got single families, uh lot size, minimum lot size of six thousand, which is down for the SEQ, at least it's down from nine thousand five hundred.
Yep.
Um. Any particular reason for it? It would increase density in in what was supposed to be.
Like, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Can can we have Kelsey do the walkthrough first and then get to?
Okay.
Yeah, I I'd like to just get the basis and then dig into the stuff you want to dig into.
Yep.
Yeah.
But the problem, Monsieur.
To Donna, could you hand your hand up?
Well, just this is more a general sort of overriding um question because um the numbers would make a lot more sense, I think, to all of us if we saw examples of
Sure.
how that exactly would work.
Um so a couple of things on on that. Um a lot of these numbers are actually the same as they are in the current districts, or at least a few of the current districts. Um so for example, things like um lot coverage, like building coverage and impervious surface coverage, those are pulled from at least one of the use categories in at least a few of the districts. So they're very similar. Um there's not a lot that changed um kind of right of that buildings only percentage um column. Most of those things are just are keeping together standards that were already there. Um but if it's Duncan, I think your question is probably a good one to start here and and really just talk through the whole thing. Um so first of all, this is based on the table uh in appendix C of dimensional standards. It's in our existing LDRs. It's set up exactly the same way. Um there are several, there are at least a few, the the gray up at the top, the gray districts at the top have not been touched because they're not residential districts. They're institutional um municipal, things like that. This, the big chunk categories that I did in different colors to be able to see are are consolidated districts. Um number one is would consist of what is now are all the different R ones. Um Lake Shore, which is on which is an R one, Lake View are two, are four. Am I missing any?
Um we uh uh and the SEQ.
Oh, and the and the equivalent SEQ district.
Residential SEQ, neighborhood residential transition.
All of the SEQ except the NRP. All the SEQ districts except NRP. Um the especially, what's up?
Including the village ones?
Yes. Um we included the village ones because the what the density requirements going up in in all of these areas that are served by water and sewer, the the difference between the village and the other areas wasn't wasn't much. Um you do have the oper- you would have the option to re-designate some air that the village ones as a a number two, like a a medium density, a medium scale, if you wanted to have a differentiation between the what are currently village um districts in the SEQ. Uh or you could could not, because that would be a much, that would be a larger jump for those areas. So number one is those what we called on our future land use map, the lower scale or low scale residential areas. Number two would be the medium scale, so orange, so yellow, orange. Um that's R seven, R seven and C, uh R twelve, Allen Road and Swift Street are all in number two. And then in number three, it's C one, um R fifteen, C one, R twelve. Uh.
It's not C one, R fifteen.
Yep, yep. So those are our current like red areas that are not in the form-based code. So the a lot of the the especially in the northern part of the Shelburne Road corridor, those are all in that number three section. Um and we'll we can, after I go through this table, we can also show a map of that. It was in the mapping that Paul sent you on December twenty third. It was one of the layers that you could turn it on on and off, but we can also put that up on the screen for for clarity um when we get to that. The second column is allowed uses. So
What's four?
Four is Queen City Park.
Four is only Queen City Park.
We left Queen City Park separate um because of its
Your old number.
Particular, particular history and development pattern. It's it's just a different, it's a different little island over there. Um but again, all of this is up for for come for discussion by the by the planning commission. If you want to lump Queen City Park in with everybody else, you are free to do so.
Good luck.
The Q's.
Yeah. The second column in our existing dimensional table, you have single family duplex, multifamily, and then non-residential. What we've done here is divided out um couple of things, divided out duplex into two-family and divided two-family. That is just my kind of working names for these things. We can, we can come up with more clear names for them. The differentiation between those two, the rows two and three in each category is a a duplex that would be a single ownership duplex, where maybe you live on one side and rent the other, or maybe you rent both, but it's one lot with a duplex on it. So your mi- your minimum lot size would be the same as a single-family home. The divided two-family is a, there are ownership situations where there's a duplex that actually has a lot line going down the middle, where this half owns that half of the building and this person owns that half of the building. Um so function.
In other words, with a party wall?
Yeah.
Or as you might know, Paul, a metoyer.
Yeah. So that is just drawing a little bit of a distinction. We didn't want it to suddenly be that if you own a side-by-side duplex, that just because of the nature of the ownership, you'd suddenly need twice as much land for your half of the duplex. Um so that's why we included that as a separate number. Um townhouse, small, multi, medium, multi, and large, multi are not are types that came from Article eleven C. So that's the building types that are currently primarily used in the TND, PUD um system. So a townhouse is three to five side-by-side detached um units, that attached units, sorry. Um where we proposed it being per unit, because you wouldn't necessarily want a a three unit and a five unit have the same lot size requirement, but that again gets up up to discussion. Um small, multi. Uh have we've we've been thinking of it as three or four units, a tri or quadplex. Um there are some construction breakpoints either at four or five, where it starts to caught you, the construction needs to be different. It starts to cost a little bit um of a, it starts to be a different cost, starts to be more commercial in nature. Um and the aesthetics of it make it less likely to look uh like a single-family home. A three or fourplex is much more likely to look very similar to a large single-family um than when you get sort of five or above.
Can I pause there for a second?
Sure.
So um a lot of this, as Kelsey said, is taken from the building types that she spent a fair amount of time developing for the traditional neighborhood type. And specifically for the small multiplex, it's um the three or four units in a building. The there's there's a description as to what it must look like, and the um description is very clear that it is uh it has the the appearance uh of and can fit within a um sort of single-family context. So it's not four sort of that are strung out this way with, you know, eight-car garage between them. It is the form of um of a single family or something aesthetically that looks like it. So, you know, an example could be the um Habitat for Humanity around the corner. You know, it's a fourplex and it's got two in the front, but it has a s- uh a singular porch that as you're traveling by, really has the feeling of being very similar aesthetically to what's around it, which is a departure from how we have in the past. You know, multiplex is just a multiplex, um anything more than two. So this is trying to a little bit of um architectural character, not necessarily architectural style. Um we recommend that something like that probably be carried forward to help fit i- integrate into the neighborhoods as well. So just to, just so that as you're thinking about it, it's not, you know, one, two, three, four with two garages each. It's something that has the feeling of of a single-family home.
Yeah, I think there there are a lot of those if in Montreal where you would have one entrance to the building button. And then a a little entrance where and then you have either two or three depending on whether it's two or three stacked. Um but it looks like a single, single-family building.
Yeah.
Because it only has one entrance.
Yeah, and there's a lot of different ways that you can do that. The small multi, you could, um the one on Heinsberg Road has four entrances, but they're sort of just around the building. Um you could have it like like Michael just described, it can be individual floors accessed by a single door. Like, there's a lot of different ways to kind of slice that um option, but the sort of bulk of the building is aesthetically mostly like a single-family home. Um up from there is the medium multi in the ele- existing eleven C, that's between five and twelve units. Um that's generally sort of, you know, it's it's a different building type of being a little bit smaller. They're generally not um more than two, two and a half stories tall. Um and they're 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 just sort of a a smaller scale of 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 multi, multi-unit building. And then large multi is, we've proposed to be thirteen and up. It is not actually addressed in the current um Article eleven C, but that's what we would, we would add to it, is is large multi being thirteen or more units. Um and you'll see as we go down to different, different sections of this chart, we are then likely proposing that the that at the large multi level, you have a requirement for lot size that is per unit, because there's a big difference between a thirteen-unit building and a hundred and thirty-unit building. Um so having the same lot size requirement for both of those things doesn't make, doesn't make a lot of sense. And that non-residential uses of uh honestly, I just made my best estimate at putting some numbers in there that made some sense. To me, um they are on the larger side, uh and I would be very willing to push push those down a bit. Um something that we did, we have been talking about is um requiring the use of of some of the commercial spaces in, especially in the one, District One, um which we'll come up with a better name for than District One. Um is that they're neighborhood-focused and not sort of necessarily drawing from like a regional draw, but you know, are more focused towards the serving the needs of the people around them. Um so like twenty thousand square feet is probably big for that number. Um but I was, I was just honestly moving through numbers from other existing districts and kind of working with what I had. Because right now, a lot of the the one with the districts that are would be become the one district don't allow um much, if any, commercial use. So it's kind of dipping the toe in and kind of figuring it out. So those are the, those are the big things that have changed. Um the next two columns are lot coverage. The first percentage number is um buildings only, and the second is all impervious surfaces, so including parking, driveway, et cetera. Um the other, the next series of numbers are the setbacks in feet. So front, side, rear, um from an accessory, accessory, oh, accessory is height. The next one, accessory, principal, principal, principal flat, principal pitched are all height limitations. And then the last four columns are a number of stories. Um which we're going to, I, we're going to have more conversations about regulating both height and stories, but yeah.
I'm sorry, so accessory, principal, and principal pitch are height?
Height limits.
Can you just explain like, so fifteen, what?
Feet. Your accessory building can be fifteen feet tall.
Oh, your accessory building?
Yeah.
That's your.
So if you have a house and you have a shed, your shed can't be more than fifteen feet tall.
Principal building is thirty-five feet, okay.
So there's um the principal flat and principal pitch. Those are all numbers that are pulled directly from our current um article, our appendix C. Uh they're a little bit different just because of the nature of how it's measured. So a flat-roofed building versus a pitched-roofed building. Um those two numbers are designed to effectively have the same visual impact. So a flat-roofed building that's twenty-five feet um versus a pitched-roofed building that's twenty-eight feet would have this a similar kind of effect on light and air for for the buildings around it.
Might be helpful if you put height.
I think it's up higher. Oh, maybe it's not.
Does uh does accessory cover ADUs?
Hmm?
A- accessory, does it include the ADU?
It it could, but it doesn't necessarily. So an ADU could be in the main house or it could be in a separate structure, but.
If it's separate, yes.
Is fifteen a viable number for?
Well. It's um if un- under the updated state.
Sixteen thirty-two it would have been, when we were much shorter.
So under the updated state law, an ADU that meets the dimensional sta- the rest of the dimensional standards has to be treated in the same way as a single-family home, right?
I haven't looked at it this week, but that is sounds correct.
So I believe that it is granted the same full height as a single-family home. Um so this would be accessory structure parentheses, non.
Non-dwelling unit.
Garage.
Per. Pergola. Here, Stan.
I'm sorry. The last four columns were.
Number of stories. So stories facing the street, stories below the roof line, stories in the roof line, and total stories. Um that is a further conversation that I would like to have either at the next meeting um or the one after, uh hopefully the next meeting. It's a little confusing to have both stories facing, stories and height regulated. Um and we've had a conversation internally as staff at this point that um twenty-eight feet is not four stories. Um and especially when newer homes are being built with nine-foot ceilings instead of seven and a half or eight-foot ceilings, there's some, there's some mismatch between these numbers. Um and there are some ways that the that stories facing the street, et cetera, are is effective at controlling what the aesthetics of a neighborhood look like, and there's some ways that it's not. So that is a included in the in the table as my part of my working table, but it would be a conversation for the next meeting. Yeah.
Um.
Are we supposed to dig into the content of this or?
Yeah.
Tonight, okay.
Okay, I know Donna and Michael both had questions.
Yeah, um. Well, one, I I just kind of still wonder about the arbitrariness of these numbers. Um and particularly the setbacks. And I was notice, oh. I was noticing that um in, I read over some of Burlington's neighborhood standards. Uh and I I thought one thing that they had in there that was very useful was an average setbacks, you know, which allowed for some variation of setbacks, but that that the average, you know, say, I think theirs was fifteen feet or something like that, but that that allowed for not every single house had to be exactly the same setback. And um having witnessed some issues in one particular development where there were some significant trees that um that were being encroached on, because there was no flexibility for the builder to reduce the front setback, which seemed um arbitrary. And I I think there are a number of reasons that that could be more flexible. Um side yards, I think. I think it's kind of uh, I mean, ten feet isn't a particularly useful side yard. You know, it allows you to get a vehicle around the side, but I wondered why we aren't starting to look at um creating flexibility by allowing at least on one side is zero. Um you know, having zero lot lines, at least on on one side, it gives you a lot more flexibility in the way you can use the site. And it allows you to perhaps, I mean, it addresses some of the like the divided two-family issue where that is technically a zero lot line. Uh where maybe we don't even have to have that separate category, because you could just allow a zero lot line. Um that could get, you know, could allow you a lot more flexibility in in how the the um standards are are utilized.
Well, here's, is zero a lot line on one side?
Uh well, at at least, you know, I I think it depends on which district you're in and what kind of lot sizes you're talking about, because it it does allow you first from some, a lot more flexibility.
The the scenarios where I've seen the zero lot, uh the the zero setback typically say it it's um zero paired with handful in a row. And so you effectively still get. zero paired with handful in a row. And so you effectively still get the, in let's, in this case, twenty feet, it's just twenty feet that belongs to you. As opposed to ten that belongs to you and ten that belongs to your neighbor. So everybody's up against one side typically. Is that what you're sort of thinking about, Donna?
Yeah, and sometimes they can be mirrored, they can be mirrored. So it, it gives you a little bit more useful side yard on one side because, you know, I've got a ten-foot side yard and doesn't allow you to really use. It doesn't, you can't even get a construction vehicle in the back with only, you know, you have to ask your, your, your neighbors for permission because it's, it's not a usable side yard at ten feet, but twenty feet, that, you know, that could be a garden. Um, you know, you could do a lot more with that. You can create side entrances too, you know, cause in some of the, some of the ordinances, I think in accessory dwellings, you know, you can't have a door on the side that faces the neighbor. Well, why not? I mean, really, why not? Uh, particularly if it's, you know, if you have privacy, that's all you really need.
Something sort of of, of note for you all, um, as you consider, you know, how, how do you, how do you want to incorporate some of these new standards into existing regulations? We have a, an, an interesting quirk in our current regulations to, to some of Donna's point that any lot that was in existence as of nineteen seventy-four, which is a pretty big chunk of the lots in some of our um longstanding neighborhoods, has a setback that is automatically half on the sides of the normal of, of the rest of the district. So instead of twenty, uh, ten feet, it's five feet. It has a reduced setback on the front and a reduced setback in the rear. Um, and I, I, my best guess is that prior to that time, prior to February twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-four, we allowed for homes to be nearer to the sides. And then sometime in the seventies, it was decided to make bigger ones, but to allow for um pre-existing lots to continue. So we could decide that that was not the right direction in nineteen seventy-four and return to something closer to that. Um, which would simplify all those lots for sure.
Wouldn't it imply higher, uh, uh, higher lot coverage then?
Not, not necessarily. Um, you could have a situation where you have wetlands or you have a hill or you have something that makes it that you can't sort of put your building in the middle. So it may be exactly the same sized building, you just moved it over. Um, so it's not necessarily that building closer to the lot line allows more lot coverage. It just means it could be shifted.
Instead of to the setback line.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, and now that said, Michael, I will add, um, if I can just opine on one thing for a second. Um, with the reduced lot sizes that are proposed here, you may want to think about whether you want to allow a little bit more lot coverage.
Yeah.
Um, because if the average lot is, say, nine thousand square feet today and you can build on twenty percent of it, twenty percent of six thousand is smaller. Um, there's pros and cons of that. Certainly I've seen bad examples um in other parts of the country where you know, a house can take up seventy percent of a small lot and it just feels like you're walking through nothing except buildings that are rammed onto lots. But twenty percent of six thousand might be a little small.
Yep.
Just before we leave the lot line, zero lot line, uh, uh, that um Donna talked about. Uh, if you have a left hand and a right hand, you'd have to avoid that somehow because the buildings would be then or that zero lot line would be the wall between the two buildings. So you.
You can do that.
That would be the divide.
As we like divided duplex.
We would have.
Yeah, but they're two different lots and two different owners.
That would be the divided two-family. Um, what we would uh have to put into to have this be the divided two-family three thousand square foot, I should have put it in here that the side yard would have to be um, zero on the adjoining side um for the, for the attached duplex. Um, hypothetically, you could have a zero lot line requirement, which just means that it's two feet or something instead of the full five or six. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's fully zero. It just means it's, would be under, you know, some other limit that we have currently set.
Yeah. One of, one of the reasons I think this is an important issue is because so much of South Burlington that was built since the seventies um are relatively small, single-story houses. They, you know, I, I, I've looked at a bunch of different ones and trying to figure out, how can you add a second unit to this property? And because they're all set smack dab in the middle of the site. Um, and ideally you want to have an access to a unit that's kind of, it's a separate entrance. Um, ideally you have one side of that unit that can be developed onto um with a side entrance. Um, and it's very hard to do that would, and still maintain a, a twenty-foot side yard. Um, or even a fifteen or, it's, it's hard to do. Which, so I, I, I think just looking at those existing neighborhoods and if you just start sketching and saying, okay, how would I add another unit to this lot? And it's, it's pretty obvious that you have to, at least on one side, um, reduce the side yard significantly.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a possibility. I also just want to, for everyone to keep in their heads that adding a unit doesn't necessarily mean a detached unit. Um, so it may be converting a garage, it may be adding a second story, it may be something else. Um, so there, there are definitely likely going to be lots that cannot build a second, they cannot subdivide or build an ADU that is detached. Um, but they would have other options. So I guess my, my thought is just to make sure that we're thinking of um, regulations that are, are, are simple and straightforward and work really well for eighty percent of the lots with the, with the recognition that there are going to be lots that won't be able to do that, won't be able to have a detached, um.
Oh, and I wasn't, I wasn't assuming detached.
Okay. Yep.
Was assuming attached. That's how small these lots are. You know, I mean, your typical lot is, I mean, it's, it's a, I think the issue is that the ha- existing house is right in the middle of the lot. And if you don't want to tear that house down, you need to some flexibility to, you know, just create a new entrance on one side. Um, and it, I, given the flexibility and the, I always think like the designer would. Um, like, how would you do this? And al- allowing that flexibility would be helpful.
I wonder, um, like, I can picture a zero lot line in like a new development or where you're kind of developing both. But I guess I'm having a harder time like picturing, like if my neighbor tore down their house and put their new house with zero feet between my yard and their house, like how would they like paint their house or like change their windows or like, you know, I don't, it feels strange in an existing neighborhood to have a zero.
This might be an opportunity to think about something that reduces it, but may- maybe not all the way down to zero. As I said, the, these pre-nineteen seventy-four lots are automatically authorized to have half this number. So a side becomes five and we have looking at it, there's a lot of examples of that around the city. I think that's why that standard exists because a lot of homes are that. And we probably get two or three a year um in those neighborhoods where there's a major um addition or renovation to a house where they take advantage of that and go to five feet. And um unless you all have been seeing that um and hearing a lot about it, we get very few comments about it.
Yeah, and Jessica, to your point, it's some, it's similar to the fence rules. Like you have to be able to maintain your fence. So if your fence in most cases can't be on your lot line, it actually has to be some distance away from the lot line so that you're able to, you know, fix a screw or paint it or, or whatever. So it's sort of a similar.
Yeah.
Thought.
And I guess I'm also thinking about, like, if somebody's gonna build a foundation right next to my lot line, like I've got trees on the edge and what's that doing to like the roots, you know, I don't know, how does that ever? And it's like a totally separate thing. I don't know that we even. Not sure that we even.
Yeah.
Address that.
I think when, when you, when you go to certain countries where um development is a little different than here, one of the, one of the things that you notice a lot is um walls that create courtyards. Uh, and that tends to be the property line, the wall. And it'll, it allows for a lot of privacy, but it also gives you kind of a, a hard border. And in some cases, a, you know, the neighbors kind of take advantage of that wall then too, because it wants to be nice on both sides. But yeah, walls are something we don't do here. Um, but I think it's, it's, it's definitely a way that gives you flexibility to create privacy with density. Um, and we'll start, I mean, I assume we'd start seeing some of that. Um, at le- least if, if people start developing existing properties.
Yeah, I, I will say, um, just for context, I worked primarily on the first couple of columns of this table. The, the sort of right side of the table is, is principally copied from the appendix C that exists. Um, so there's plenty of, of opportunity for change there, especially when we're talking about um reducing uh lots, effectively reducing lot sizes, um, something like a you end up cutting a lot of your lot size off by having setbacks that some of these, um, like a rear setback of thirty feet could be quite a bit of your, of your lot um at, at six, at six thousand square feet. So um, I think that's a conversation that needs to come out of the conversation that we need to have today, um, which is really, and I, and I'm happy you brought up Donna, that we can, we can do some rough sketches of what this would look like. Like here's a site that's X number of square feet and this is what the current setbacks make it look like. And here's where you could put a house or not, or you know, some things like that. We can put those things together. Um, tonight, I would really love your feedback on the minimum lot sizes that we've put in, um, both on the numbers that we've uh listed and uh what if, what in- additional information you would like to help you make decisions about what those numbers should be. Yeah, Laurie.
I've got two things. First, on the right side, on the setbacks, et cetera. I'm thinking about the new comp plan and I'm thinking about these dimensions and the comp plan is trying to move us towards compact neighborhoods that are closer and friend, uh. These, these numbers, the way they're laid out, keep building the same kind of neighborhoods that we had. Which are these individual houses, plucked in these individual lots, and it's sort of this development pattern that is has in the past been very car-centric. We can't do brownstones with this. I'm not, I'm thinking about new neighborhoods, et cetera, but.
So a townhouse.
A, a townhouse does that, but if you think of a number of different areas, cities, et cetera.
Hmm.
There'd be a whole street, a row of townhouses. And.
Yep.
It can look really beautiful. People have really good times. You get dense uh housing so that the corner store has enough people to come in and make it viable.
Yep.
Um, this, I understand what we're doing, but I'm just wondering whether we want to think about changing, changing our existing neighborhoods to be that, might be tough. But how do we incorporate that so that there's more flexibility in the tight neighborhoods we're on?
So as, as I said, the setback right side of the table, I really didn't touch. That's the appendix C um things. Uh, the other thing to think about is, is we need to come, this, that you need to bring the LDRs into compliance with S one hundred. But there has not been a, a bigger community conversation about some of these things. Um, so where we're kind of walking the line right now is complying with S one hundred, doing it well, doing it in a way that it, that can adjust and help the neighborhoods thrive over time, but not kind of drop it on people's heads. If we suddenly said, hi, everybody in the orchards, you have a zero lot line on all sides and your neighbors can build four townhouses across their lot. It's, it's a much bigger leap than smaller, than having a few larger lots in existing neighborhoods be able to subdivide. Um, cause that's, uh, having twelve thousand square foot lots in some of, some orchards, Chamberlain, Butler Farms, et cetera. Um, is not unheard of. There are, there are lots that are twelve thousand square feet that you could subdivide. Um, or, and you could make into duplexes because they also have the, the single family homes. So trying to make steps towards change and steps towards intentional and thoughtful compliance without maybe having the more extreme, I'm not, not extreme, but the more, the bigger leap towards some other, other building types. The other thing is in the form-based code area, which is the sort of city center area, there are some very different rules that apply because there's other design standards. So something like a row of townhouses. Um, and Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, could occur in the form-based code area. Um, it just wouldn't be outside of that as, as this is written now.
Is, how, is that true though? Cause in your zone one, you have townhouse and you have.
Townhouse is units of three, it's three to five attached. So you couldn't have like ten in a row?
No, but you would have five and then you'd have ten, twenty feet. Two times ten-foot side yards and then you'd have another five. So you have a
Yep.
Short break.
Yeah.
Which is.
So it's, it's.
Reasonably close to what you're talking about. You're just saying maybe not, uh, not require the.
Yeah, this is not the same zone as this would be, but the Market Street triplexes is sort of along that that line where there's three in a row and then a break of twenty feet or so, and then three in a row, and then a break, and then three in a row, and then a break.
Um, just a question, would a, would a duplex um or a two-family also include a stacked two-family?
Yes.
Right, so I think that the, the first of those would is, would be a stacked two-family and the second would be a divided two-family essentially.
Not necessarily. It's, it's up to the ownership structure. You could have a stacked or a side-by-side duplex that is on a single lot owned by a single owner. Um, but technically having two units.
Okay.
Um, and that would be the two-family category. The divided two-family couldn't be stacked because you can't have a lot line that goes horizontal. Um, it would be, you know, I own this, my hu- my home is this half of the building and your home is that half of the building. Um, so it's one building, but divided. Where the stacked, you could have stacked or side-by-side, but with a single owner in the two-family or condo, which is a different
So.
But not a physical lot.
For this evening, um, what might be helpful to us would be, um, in addition to what you're discussing here, um, how we might help you to um quantify some of this. So for example, for the single and two-family in the uh, uh, the one district, we put six thousand square feet. We listed it six thousand square feet for a couple of reasons. One, if you compare it to the um uh, sorry, the um the PND um that um you developed, it's sort of right in the middle. Um, where a single family is between five and ten thousand square feet, it's a minimum and maximum because they're new neighborhoods. We didn't go down to five thousand in this draft because as Michael alluded to earlier, um, a lot of our neighborhoods have lots that are somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-five hundred to ten thousand five hundred's um feet. So if you choose five thousand as your minimum lot size versus choosing six thousand as your minimum lot size, it has a potentially pretty substantial different outcome. Because let's say you chose five thousand and it's a neighborhood of all ten thousand square foot lots, then they could all subdivide. And then would each be able to have either a single family or duplex. There may be nothing wrong with that, although Kelsey, you know, as you noted, this is pretty new in our community. One of the things that we thought we, um, we've reached out to our uh GIS consultant to do is to do a mapping breakdown by neighborhood of um lots that are five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, nine thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand, twelve thousand square feet. So you can get a sense both the, from colors and from percentages of, you know, uh, take um the Eastwoods neighborhood, what percentage of the lots are under ten thousand square feet. So you can get a sense as to what the implications of this would be. Um, I think we can probably also get out some lot coverage, um, pretty accurate. Um, uh, uh, averages in neighborhoods based on um the building footprint data that exists. I'm not sure we can get as far as doing good setbacks because I just looked at the data and um, personal data and building footprint data don't always totally align. So in some neighborhoods shifted by ten feet and that makes all the difference. Um, so it, and we might not be able to get that, but we wanted to hear, you know, is this the kind of information that would be useful for you?
Yeah, but some of it is a major that R one, for instance, along Spear, there's a bunch of two-acre and three-acre lots. And if you go, I don't know what, you're going from a three-acre lot to a minimum of six thousand square feet, that's
Huge.
Quite a, yeah.
And don't forget that in areas served by water and sewer, it has.
It's gonna be five.
Essentially. Um, it's become nearly that, eight thousand essentially is the.
Yeah, five great.
Eighty-seven hundred is a fifth man acre, give or approximately.
Um, Duncan?
I had a quick question. I was just reading the five dwelling US per.
I had a quick question, I was just reading the five dwelling US per acre, the paragraph you had there recommends us doing point. Stop, sorry, the paragraph recommends is going to point two acres citywide, so that's eighty seven hundred square feet. But that's not within the table.
That is the what we have to do, that's 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 strict, that would be strict compliance with S one hundred. I may have, I may have not worded it that way, but strict compliance of compliance with S one hundred is eighty seven and change. Anywhere that's served by water and sewer, so.
We can go lower and that's what you propose.
Yeah.
So I guess I have a question with that, like, so you said this yellow.
Yep.
Number one category was kind of up to R four.
Yep.
The current minimum lot size for our fours ninety five hundred.
Right.
Which again, it's more than the eighty seven hundred, so it's too big.
Yep.
But. You also talk later in memo about having lot size be something that could be like adjusted with TDRs or things. I guess I'm wondering if. Six thousand is. Too small or.
So one.
Maybe we should maybe, and and this is maybe something we can get at with the mapping.
Yeah. So something just to point out is the current regulations are ninety five hundred. Um that was not the regulations in place at a ti- at times that many of our neighborhoods were developed. So there are are significant numbers of existing lots that are seven thousand, eight thousand square feet already. Um so just because the current regulation is ninety five hundred square feet, it's one of those numbers that has actually crept up over time. Um from sort of forties, fifties through like the eights and nineties, it has crept up to that number of ninety five hundred. Um so it that number doesn't necessarily reflect what exists in these neighborhoods now.
But I think it's a good point.
Yep.
Dunk, you know Duncan pointed out, like you said eighty seven hundred and then when you look at the table, it's not that.
Yeah.
Um Fran, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, okay, it's hard with the table up there for me to see who's talking next, so sorry to have jumped in.
No, go ahead.
But uh so there's two things, I guess, when we pick the lot size. It would be helpful to know. What's existing as as Paul explained, because we we could have nonconforming lots, I think. If we if we have the six thousand. Uh or if we have eighty seven hundred, but there's lots that are existing lots that are six thousand, do they become nonconforming?
I think they would be, um it is much more likely that you get lots that become conforming. Um than the other way around currently in in the R four, it's ninety five hundred square feet is the minimum lot size. Um so uh there are significant numbers that are seven, eight thousand square feet. Um there are very few that are under like five.
Right, oh and the other thing, I think for me, it's easier to think about these numbers. If I look at the difference between a a built neighborhood and open land. So the the built neighborhood um. I guess the 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 lot size really is determined by what's already there, that tells me what I can do with that lot. If it's open land less than four acres, then these numbers uh become uh more significant, I think.
I think I think you you're right on that Fran, is like if you have a neighborhood that everything is eight thousand square foot lots existing. Um there's gonna be a lot less. Immediate change than if someone, you you would have to buy a few of them and then sort of re-subdivide to be able to take advantage of the smaller six thousand square foot. Minimum lot size generally, if it wasn't half. Um but in a new subdivision, you could design it around the minimum lot size and get more units.
And 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 don't forget that at four acres, it is a mandatory. Be a traditional neighborhood.
Yep.
EUD, which brings in the smaller standards already, so that that for your larger lots. That's the work that you developed a year and a half ago, and none of this would supersede that because that brings its own rules in that is actually. A little bit smaller than almost everything in here.
Yep, you could put a single family homes on on what is it, five thousand square foot minimum in a TND.
Uh it actually can be smaller.
And the cottage, the cottage size is three thousand, a twelve hundred square foot house on three thousand.
Yeah, I think I think one one point we're noting is that a big difference between some of the older, larger lot neighborhoods. And the newer, smaller lot neighborhoods is where the garage is placed, the size of the garage and the placement of it, you know, cuz. The older lots had. What traditionally was called a center hall colonial. And then they had a garage attached to one end of it, so that the lots were a hundred feet or more in width. Hundred and twenty feet even, you know, so these were quarter acre lots. You look at, you look at the the bigger house lots and it's it's not that the houses are so big. In some cases, it's just that they use the lot really inefficiently. You know, because the garage and the driveway are taking up so much of the space. So if you think about it, if you just like the well, we're the neighborhood I lived in, I think they they reduced the lots by half. And in order to use half the land for the same number of units and basically they just, you know, um. Uh homestead design just put in, they designed or used um. Uh home designs that had the garages sort of on the front of the unit. Uh and then the the lots, the the units were built deeper. Um but the lots were much narrower. Um and my my lot's a sixth of an acre and I think that's about the standard size in the neighborhood. And there's a variety of house sizes on those lots too, because the corner lots became the larger houses. Um there's a a number of townhouses, um you know, which each has their own garage, you know, so. In in some ways, you know, it's like. I don't think these these lot sizes seem small to me that we're proposing just because. You can still get the same size house on it, you just you just have to configure it a little bit differently and, you know. Ax the single, you know, the center hall colonial because that that's that's no longer a thing. In, you know, in in modern neighborhoods, cuz none of them really have lots that size anymore. In a in a in an urban air area.
Except if you look at golf course development, you've got fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand square foot lots, a lot of them.
But they're actually pretty dense, a lot of a lot of the lot is just, you know, it's backyard that that um that. You know, it's a it's a beautiful green space in back of the units, the units themselves are quite dense. Um and and they're.
Looking at them here, that's a half an acre, one of them, and point three is a small one.
Well, there well, there are some houses on the on the south end of that, which are which are quite large lots. But the but the townhouses, they, you know, they're they're duplexes. You know, those those are mostly duplexes on the northern, on the, yeah, on the northern half of the lot, so. I'd say overall, I don't know what the density is, but. The majority of those lots are the green space behind them.
Um uh Paul Ingles.
This is the six thousand square feet, um because uh that's just slightly less than point two acres. Is that the idea?
Part of the idea, sorry, um part of the idea is um. Putting being a little more forward thinking than just point two acres, so something lower than just going with eighty seven hundred. Um the other is that there are larger lots in some of these neighborhoods that are twelve thousand square feet, but there are not. Um it's not all of the lots, so it's it's a it's a line where you can, there are some large lots that just happened and how the development happened that. Um could be subdivided, but most of the neighborhood um could not necessarily. So it would allow change and allow better use of sort of these outlier lots in some of our existing neighborhoods. Um without necessarily making every lot in every existing neighborhood instantly subdividable. So it's kind of threading that needle.
So.
And being around number.
That ends up creating a situation where a number of people suddenly find that their lots quote might be more valuable. Because I can subdivide them. Yet we've set up here that a divided two family can be three thousand. So basically, we're saying somebody can have a lot that's three thousand square feet. And and so. I'm I mean, I understand maybe sounding a little more like a hammer here, but. If if two thirds of a neighborhood has the potential to subdivide. What's the rationale to not allow the other third to do that?
So the difference between.
They all fit.
Right, so the difference between the two family and the divided two family is that they would look like the sa- they're the same building. It is just legal ownership. Um so if you owned your home and it was somehow that you could put up a few walls and change the heating system and you suddenly have a duplex. And you said, you know what, I wanna sell that second half, you could draw that line down the middle and then you have two. Connected. You know.
Which would be two zero lot line buildings, which what Don was talking.
Yes, which is something that, so I haven't updated, as I said, I haven't updated the right side of the table, and so something like the divided two family would have to have a zero lot line on the attached side. Um not necessarily on the other sides, but on the attached side it would.
So I'm just, I'm just questioning the idea that we're gonna make this situation for some lots. We're gonna limit it for others, just. It it sounds like kind of an arbitrary way.
So again, I think it's it's what I was talking about before is we're in a position where we need to make some thoughtful but reasonably quick. Um decisions to come into compliance with S one hundred. There are definitely further conversations, conversations that need to be had. And from our perspective, and it's at least from my perspective, it is, um it would be a much better situation to be making those discussions. At the community level and be having a much longer project to do that, so. Spending six months um having neighborhood meetings and things like that to to discuss some of these things instead of. Um immediately meaning that a sing- effectively meaning that a single family home could become. Um four units because it would become two duplexes instantly, that's a big leap for people and for neighborhoods. Um so being able to come into compliance with S one hundred. Allow for larger lots and neighborhoods to be subdivided and to be sort of intensified in their in their scale of use. Um but not necessarily having the whole neighborhood be able to do that instantly, I think is is the line that we're trying to walk is. Is doing it well for now, but also opening, starting, starting, have it using this. Process to start the conversation towards that bigger conversation of should everybody's lot be three thousand square feet? And should we limit the size of homes or should, you know, should we allow apexes in? You know, existing neighborhoods, like there are a lot of other sort of densification and urbanization conversations that can be had. This is taking a a big step forward, but without jumping ahead of of really having that conversation um at the community level.
But that talks about then instead of us. Fixing the LDRs once, we need to do it twice.
Welcome to the planning commission.
But um and the other thing I'll say to that is if we made it five thousand square feet. And it made it so that every lot in a subdivision could be split. That's a scary idea, the reality is that will not happen for decades.
Sure.
In most spaces, so so saying that we're trying to prevent people from being scared, I think is. A little overstated because no matter what we do, uh the Laurel Hill neighborhood is not all of a sudden gonna get. Subdivided throughout the whole neighborhood.
I think it's, I think what I was really thinking is not necessarily people being afraid of their whole neighborhood turning over, but having. The planning commission um take a big leap where an individual homeowner thinks, oh, my neighbor could do this. And it could could change my use of my property dramatically, it's sort of, it's sort of what Jessica was saying earlier about a zero lot line, it's. Oh, that doesn't feel totally comfortable, it's it's not exactly a fear of the whole neighborhood, it's it's the fear of the couple of properties around. Each person um and to to have people in the community feel. Uh more involved in that discussion, I think is it will be important, and it's something the planning commission has mentioned. Before, when we've talked about infill even before S one hundred came around, we talked about having a bigger. Community conversation where we go to the orchards, we go to Chamberlain, we go to Mayfair Park, we hold meetings at the schools, we. Do further outreach, we do all of these things to reach more people um intentionally on a very specific topic and be able to do that. Um in a way that people feel comfortable with and and also really. Have the opportunity to explain it and educate people about like it may look like X, it may look like Y. Um these are the things it may look like instead of instead of just here's some changes to the LDRs and here's everything that may happen.
I would just say, yes, agreed, and also there will be some level of change that S one hundred is bringing, period. So there will be a neighbor who will have a lot next to them that will have changed, period.
Yeah.
So the deciding where that line is, we're recommending something that is above the minimum of what S one hundred is. But maybe not the maximum that you could go, ultimately, this is your call about where you're comfortable with. And we'll help you, you know, build the data so that you feel good about which wherever you land.
Yeah, and I think I think something Michael said earlier is important too, like when I'm, we're talking about category one, this is the current R one and the current R four. And everything in between, so um the change to R one in some parts of the SEQ. Is is a much bigger change already than it may be for the current R four. So pushing what is the current R four further pushes those other lower density districts really far. So kind of taking steps and doing multiple amendments to the LDRs is in over the course of years is not necessarily a bad thing.
Right.
Oh, let's Fran and then Michael.
Go ahead.
Um I just said one comment, I I had made some uh notes during the week uh and look back. At at one of our April meetings, um the owner of uh eight Laurel Hill Drive had come. Uh with his architect and and uh. Talked about a proposed uh change to uh the property at that address. And uh the notes I'd written down uh was it was a quarter acre lot. Uh it's currently R four. Uh and what he wanted, what he was presenting was putting four units. And uh. He uh had talked about that in order to do that, he would have to uh have an incursion into the setbacks. Uh if he put four units, but I guess he could get three units in there, so uh. I I guess if we if we try to think about what's gonna happen in a neighborhood that's currently R four. Uh maybe just either look back at at uh. Uh what that fellow proposed, I I couldn't find any of the drawings that they used. Uh at the meeting as part of the meeting minutes, but uh. Anyway, it was it was something that uh was an active proposal at that time, we'll probably come back.
So just for everyone's information, um eight Laurel Hill Drive is uh ten thousand five hundred and sixty three square feet. So under what we've proposed here, you actually would be able to put a small multifamily, which we've put the minimum lot size as eight thousand square feet. So you could put a three or four unit, you could divide into three or four units um on that property.
Right, I think he had a, I I think the way the existing house was, there were some setback problems, but otherwise, yeah, would be the three or four. So that could happen in these neighborhoods.
Yeah, so that's the next conversation that I would love to have um whenever you are comfortable and I just wanna frame it for a second is we have.
There might be still some discussion before we move on to the next one.
I just wanted to frame what it was so that we, they know what I'm, so they maybe don't have a, if they have a question now, that's later, anyway.
Wanna make sure we end with some good feedback.
Okay.
Can I just butt in on that because I think there was an existing building.
There is.
That he wanted to keep and adding the four, he may have come a cropper on lot coverage as well as.
There were other, there were other thing issues in his proposal, but what he was, he was running off on some other issues and dimensional requirements, I was just. Stating that the uh moving towards what we're moving towards, the units per. Acre would not be a problem anymore where it currently is.
Yep. Um the question I had is, wa- was a matter of privacy, actually, if I'm uh, I wanna put a second. Unit uh another, make a du- uh an up and down duplex out of my house. But then I will overlook my neighbor's garden. And my neighbor is a habitual nude sunbath, I'm saying, he's not gonna like that. What do we do about that sort of thing, cuz I I know from personal experience, I wanted to put an additional window on the second story of my home in Montreal. And there are rules that you have to get your neighbor's permission, which he did, which he refused, so I just put a bigger window. In the same place.
We have a. We have a standard in our current regulations in districts like the R four district that says that. Um, a building cannot be more than one story taller than the buildings on the lots adjacent to it. That doesn't a hundred percent answer your question, but it does mean that you're not gonna have a three story.
If if they're all singles.
Yeah, I I think, I'm not sure without a major um. Both change the regulations and.
That's.
Uh, e- e- expansion of your administrative capacity in your city, that we'd be in a place to be able to. Have that level of discussion and regulations to be, but I mean, it's, it's for you to discuss, but that's a, that's another level of.
I'd rather not have the same regs as I had to deal with in Saint Albert.
So, so it sounds like we aren't ready to give feedback on the minimum lot size or the coverage. Or the setbacks, but we're excited about the. Mapping you're gonna give us to be able to kind of hash into it.
Yep.
It sounds like especially in zone one, which is vastly different than the existing regulations um. Versus the other, I mean, the other ones maybe are a little closer to.
Yeah.
But we don't really look at that.
I have one piece of feedback about the square footage and it's uh, regarding the non-residential uses.
Yeah.
Um, I think twenty thousand square feet is crazy big. Um, there are a lot of places where um. A single family home on a, on a uh, six thousand square foot lot could make a really nice corner store.
Make a really nice what?
Could make a really nice corner store or a neighborhood coffee house or any number of things, so. I'm just saying from my perspective, if we're trying to create neighborhoods that have more dynamic character to them. Twenty thousand square feet feels really big for the commercial.
One of the discussions that Kelsey and I had in developing these, these um, this first cut was should we put in a maximum anywhere? And given that these are largely pre-existing neighborhoods on the residential side, it didn't really make sense because. What do you do with somebody who's got a existing twelve thousand square foot lot? But on the commercial side.
Twenty thousand for a maximum would make.
Or maybe, or maybe even smaller than that, so that somebody doesn't consolidate two or three existing homes into something that's unexpected. Um, so that, that is in the form, in the um, in the TND, I'm sorry, yes, in the TND, there's a maximum lot size and. Building size for a commercial.
Um, there are also.
Don't we have a precedent for that?
There, yeah, there's some.
Five thousand gross square feet maximum.
Yep, there are some other areas that have um, five thousand square feet per unit or five thousand square feet per use. Um, in like the R seven NC, there's a few of our existing districts that have those kinds of. You, yeah, South Village, there there has to be a certain size, you can't just have a target.
So, maximums I think would be great, but I just, I wanted to say, I think a minimum of twenty thousand square feet would be. Really restrictive on being able to create dynamic neighborhoods.
And do you think, um, you know, I think this is a question that might be good to be able to talk about what to the public and with. Um, the council when we presented to them, do you think maybe just picking out just a handful of existing small businesses around the city that people are familiar with? And what size lot they're on, just as a, like the airport grocery and um. I don't know, maybe the South Village, I I don't know, some things that people might be able to like see in their head and be able to be like, oh, okay, I know that size.
I think that's a great idea. We can do a mix of some, some newer ones and some older ones like the Red Barn, for example, off uh, Tilly Drive's a new one. Um, with your permission, maybe we would look a little bit outside of our community too, because we don't have a ton, ton of examples.
Right.
Of this in in our community, but there are a number that are within people's travel shed.
There's some great examples in Burlington.
Yeah.
The Willard Street Market or some of these others that are very small lots.
Henry Street Deli.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, and they serve huge benefit to the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Oh, Donna?
Yeah, the, the other thing, when you um, when you think about more traditional neighborhoods. Um, you know, the residential and commercial are often in the same building. And often the commercial is the downstairs and the residential's above. Um, I don't know exactly the person's name, but apparently she has a restaurant business somewhere in South Burlington. And she was hoping to get permission to build a residence attached to the business. And she was told she was not allowed to do that. And of course, I didn't know the regulations well enough to say one way or another, but um, when you think about equity. Um, and particularly immigrant populations, um, I've just been reading, reading a book by Paul Thoreau about the South. And how um, a lot of the immigrants from India, um, they. Gravitate towards certain kind of businesses because they can live there. And it's a very, you know, popular way of settling in a place and starting a business. Because your business place is connected to your house. And um, I'm not even sure if you can do that in South Burlington right now, but. In terms of neighborhood businesses, I can think of a few. Um, that really are kind of local businesses and probably don't require parking or, you know, not more than one or two spaces. Um, hair salons, um, you know, barber shops, things like that, um. I'm sure, well. Uh, delis. You know, it's just like, when you start getting into denser neighborhoods, I think you're talking about houses above businesses. Do we allow that? Are we considering that?
Um, not presently for the most part, um, we allow for a home occupation, but it's a very tight where you have to. It has to be residential in all um, aspects. Or appearance of residential, and so there there's sort of a line where if you're an accountant who gets, you know. A handful of clients, you know, in March and then is otherwise pretty quiet, that probably passes if it's a. Somebody who's a solo hair practitioner, probably, but a deli, probably today not, because it would. Not feel like that. One of the ideas that we've actually been tossing around in our office, um, as we think about what the character of allowing for limited. Scale commercial in the residential neighborhoods is, do we maybe create two versions of it? One that is interior to a neighborhood that could be exactly what you're describing, which is um, a. Uh, a a singular building that contains both a housing unit and a business. And the big distinction being the business does not have to be necessarily run by the people who live in the hu- in the, in the housing unit, which would be a departure from our current. And then the second category might be full commercial uses, but those might be only on. Uh, collector and arter- arterial streets, so not deep into a neighborhood, but on the sort of edges of neighborhoods. So that it's not driving an unexpectedly large amount of traffic.
You do allow it here, the, in in the Form-based code.
Correct.
Only in T four and five, I don't think T three lets you do it. T three.
It's, it lets you do it, but the, the size is very small.
Even in the same building?
Yes.
Yeah, I I agree with.
Familiar with what Donna is talking about, I mean, they call shophouses and.
Yeah.
Lived in places and worked in places where there are thousands of them. Uh, and in one case, there's an entire street of shophouses with restaurants and small grocery stores. Um, it's called Resquoth Road in Singapore.
Yeah, it seems like a good idea. My grandmother lived above our library and my uncle lived above the store he ran on our, in our town. And I mean, it was more like T three, it wasn't super tall buildings, but. It seems like additional flexibility and another way to have more housing.
Yeah, we're, we're tossing around um, using something called limited neigh- limber- limited neighborhood commercial. Um, as a use category, and so it has things like size limitations, it would have type limitations, like you couldn't suddenly start a. A welding business necessarily, like it would, there would be certain things that you could do or not do and and have it be. We don't actually care which of these things you're doing, if it's a flower shop or if it's a gift shop or if it's a. A bakery, we don't really care if it's fits into this other box um, of being of size and impact. Um, you can do kind of whatever you want in this group of cat, this group. Um, so that's something that we've, we've been throwing around and that again goes to that use discussion that we will have at a future meeting.
Okay, any other on this topic?
I've got one more.
Laurie and then.
The one more I was gonna say is, um, on the townhouse, where you've got three thousand per unit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that makes sense when they're. Uh, if there are two townhouses, that's a three, a six thousand square foot lot.
Yep, exactly.
If you get five, that's a fifteen thousand square foot lot.
Right.
And I would wonder if maybe there's a way to graduate that, so that as the number of townhouses grow, the lot size. Uh, per unit gets smaller because um. If this is to provide recreation space, et cetera, for for the people in the townhouse. It's not promoting, creating community space. Et cetera, anyway, that, that was just a, a thought of. If you've got five units, they could be more compact and potentially have less square footage.
I think there's also an opportunity for your, for technically a. Side by side media multifamily, maybe.
I don't think so because it has to look like a single family.
No, medium, the five to twelve unit size.
Hmm.
Hmm.
What, one of, one of Kelsey's questions though, if we answered is, should we? Should there are site amenities be increased?
Yeah.
If you have a multiple, then proportionally you need to in- increase the site amenity.
Unless those site amenities are being provided offsite in a community that has.
Yeah, you know, it's uh, yeah, as in, as in my case where there's a swing pool and.
So there's a difference between a site amenity and a civic space. The civic space is like the neighborhood scale. You have a bigger park that's in the middle that serves everybody kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the site amenity is supposed to be. Just very close to the residents and just for the use of sort of those couple of residents. Um, so it's, it's a little bit of a, two different things that are, are both regulated.
Um, I know you've had your hand up, for, did you still want to say something? Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan, would you mind coming up um, to one of the mics and turning on, make sure it's bright green so that folks at home can see you? And just introducing yourself because I can't totally.
Make yourself comfortable, sit down.
Brian Doyle, I'll try not to talk too long, um, Laurie, I think I've, I followed your comment where, you know, if there's two townhouses. You need some side space, but as you're filling in townhouses between them, you don't need that same amount of land space. Um, and so it sounds like a base amount of land plus so much per unit. Might allow for the scaling up to be a little more economical on land. Was that?
Yes.
Kind of the comment?
Yeah.
Okay, and then in terms of, I I don't know if you guys use the South Burlington data viewer, I think Michael might be on it because of some of your comments. Super helpful, so you can see like, just click on the red barn on Heinsberg Road and see that it's about fifty thousand square foot lot. Or that tax place on Williston Road, um, which was an old two-story family house right next to um. Rick Marcot Central School back here, that's an eleven thousand square foot lot. If you look at South Prospect Street, you'll find lots as small as uh, five and a half thousand square feet. Or my neighborhood on like Ferry Road, lots of one-story houses, nine hundred, twelve hundred square feet, seven to eight thousand square foot lots. Behind me on Oakwood Drive, similar sized lots, but two-story houses, eighteen to two thousand square feet. As you kind of just start to get a sense, even without a map being produced and waiting for that to come out, you can just click around a little bit. And get that sense of uh, what those dimensions kind of look like and also see where there are those weird sized lots that have extra space. But I do want to note, in, in more modern developments, when um, if you look like across from Hubbard Park, right? Um, there's a lot of space between the houses. Um, where there's wetlands preserved that aren't part of parcels. In old neighborhood developments, those weren't set aside outside of the parcel. So you might see a place where a bunch of large lots come together and not realize on the map, but that's actually kind of wetland space. That you wouldn't really be able to do much with anyway, so. You know, some of the corner lots might be able to have more size, but more than likely, half the large lots in the old neighborhoods are actually still limited on. If they could be divided and have something built.
Anything else on this topic before we move to the next one?
Is this, uh, is it, would this be the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Um, my name is Evan Gould, I'm a, I'm not a resident of South Burlington, I'm a resident of Burlington. Um, but I have been advocating as for the neighborhood code work that Burlington is doing and then. Um, was looking recently uh, at this draft ordinance as well. And just had a couple of thoughts for consideration, some line up with some of the items that have been discussed, but. Uh, I think uh, between District One and District Two, it, it looks like. For the most part, the setbacks are kind of the main differentiator, um, and then for single and two-family, the building only lot coverage. I think, I think if you did something like the average uh, front setbacks or average side door setbacks that kind of let you do. That flexibility of having a neighborhood grow more dense, more walkable over time. Um, kind of the, you know. Average of the adjacent lots, you could potentially merge those two districts into, into one. Um, I'd also say, consider for small multi. Uh, the same lot size for single and two-family because you're already controlling the massing with that, that lot coverage. So, right, even if you have a, a quadplex on a six thousand square foot lot, it's only gonna be able to be the same size as a single family. Unit on that lot, so from a visual standpoint, the massing and building envelope isn't gonna be any different, so I don't know that the. The extra two thousand square feet is, is really that necessary? And then also. Um, another kind of reason for merging the lot coverage in one would be if you divided your house in, into four units. Effectively, you get an extra ten percent of lot coverage. With the same building, you could build an addition. It, it's, it seems strange to me, so. Um, those are kind of my, my thoughts on that. I like the idea of the, the neighborhood mixed-use commercial stuff that's cool to hear, so.
Thank you. Um, Colin, you have your hand up?
Yeah, hi, um, I also, I just came from a meeting of about the uh, the same process in Burlington, I'm a Burlington resident, um. And I, I apologize, I, I'm not like super familiar with the specifics of South Burlington's. Uh, zoning map and and districts, I, I was just looking at everything and was also taking a look at the comprehensive, uh, the city plan, the draft city plan for twenty twenty-four. Um, which it's, I know it's kind of tricky that like we're, you're going through the draft plan process and then you also have this um. Act forty-seven like compliance work that you have to do kind of simultaneously. Um, you know, from the perspective of someone in Burlington, we have water sewer everywhere. I think we're making some like really, really interesting changes to our code in terms of like removing minimum lot size entirely. Um, as a regulatory tool. Doubling multifamily buildings on lots, um, you know, we're still limiting the building footprint and the height and we have setbacks still, but. Just trying to get creative with uh, the building types that are allowed on existing lots for infill. Uh, you know, South Burlington is different than us, obviously, you have this really um, challenging mix of rural. Suburban zones and and con- conserved land, um, so I guess maybe this is like a process that, that the city will have to. I would suggest really, really decide like which parts of the city. Do you want to densify and make really nice mixed-use walkable, you know, friendly vibrant neighborhoods? And which you kind of need to say like, okay, there shouldn't be any more housing here. Um, because right now it, it kind of feels like a, a half-measure approach in like both directions and then you sort of end up with these. Areas that don't really serve either purpose particularly well of like either conservation or housing density. Um, and I think that's like a, that is negatively impacts all of the other goals of like. In- improving walkability and reducing vehicle miles traveled and all this other stuff, so uh, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else on the lot side? Anything else on the lot size before we?
I just had this question about the impact of. Re- uh, the reduction from ninety-five hundred to six thousand and. As a minimum lot size, which in many cases is fine, but in some areas. Uh, it would, in some areas, we, we want very light density in some of the SEQ districts. Um, I think that, that would be sort of counter to what we're trying to. Uh, trying to achieve it in some of these. Maybe it's, maybe it's covered by this note of because that it's only in the areas. In the water and sewer service area. Does that, does it, does that sort of answer my concern about increased density down there?
Um, in the areas that of the southeast quadrant that are. Existing neighborhoods at this point, or the very small handful of places that still exist that are allowed to be existing neighborhoods. The rules of S one hundred will apply because they are served by water and sewer. And so um, our approach has been to effectively consider those neighborhoods like Butler Farms or like.
Those wouldn't be the ones that be subject to this new six thousand foot minimum.
Right, they would become treated in the same manner from a zoning perspective as um, the Orchard's Neighborhood as um. East Woods, because effectively, that's what the, that's what the new law is. And so we're, we wind up sort of. Splitting hairs pretty quickly.
Okay, so, so the twenty percent um, building coverage is twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah, some of those are existing numbers from existing regulations, so those can definitely be changed. Um, we can, we can mock up some, what does it look like if the building coverage is twenty, thirty, forty? You know, we can do some drawings of that. Um.
Yeah.
Not professional graphic designer, so you know, it'll be a, a bunch of boxes, but. Um, do my best to show some of those things fairly uh, quickly. And I can also um. Should do the same with the setbacks that we were talking about before.
Maybe we should reserve that so that you can buy extra with TDRs.
The, the TDRs is, is a further conversation that needs to.
I've got some notes on that.
Mike, that's how I started this out. So I mean, we're, if we're, yeah, so we can, I think we'll need to circle back with that and.
Yeah, I think just to preview the TDR conversation a little bit, I think there's some opportunity for TDRs to be used for commercial. Um, especially um, and potentially for um, more targeting the TDRs towards multifamily. And that not necessarily having the, having it be applicable in, in the same way to. Like a six thousand square foot single-family home lot. Um, it may, it may not. These are further conversations to be had, but. Figuring out different ways to have it apply to commercial lots and also to um, be really incentivized on some of the multifamily. Properties, I think is, is probably a better, a better way to have TDRs. Used and a better way for the, the finances of it all to kind of work out than for an individual, single-family home to, to need a TDR, to use it. To be likely to buy a TDR to do something like reduce their lot size by a thousand square feet. I just don't think that's, that's very likely. Um, and it's more that bigger, bigger properties, bigger developments would be paying to do some of that stuff. But that's a, a future conversation. Um, another thing that I wanted to uh, talk about and the thing that I was saying I wanted to frame earlier. Was actually what I'm now, I'm not remembering if it was Evan or Colin online who mentioned, I think it was Evan. Um, how it was a, at a previous meeting that you did want the. Single family and two-family, which have to be the same, um, to be different from the small, multi and medium, multi minimum lot sizes. You didn't um, at a previ- in a previous discussion, it was tossed out that those numbers should maybe, they should be different. Um, is that something that you're still thinking like? Small, multi, triplex, quadplex should be different than single-family or duplex? And how much different? Does this feel like a good scale or is this a further conversation that you'd like to have after having more of those lot? Size numbers?
I think we want the examples first.
Okay.
I think that'll be.
Great, good.
Um, I guess, I guess with the examples, um, do you picture having like? You know, I know a few meetings back, you pulled out some of the kind of older examples where you'd like taken like an actual block.
Yep.
With the aerial photo.
That was from the presentation during IZ.
From I D.
Yep.
Um, it feels like maybe, I know you talked about like kind of a bigger mapping of classifying parcels. But maybe at least one example of like an existing aerial photo showing like an area where people could picture.
Putting the actual numbers.
Couple of dimensions on, just for discussion.
Yeah, I think there's two things we're talking about. One is sort of at a, at a block scale, like, like you were mentioning, um, putting some actual numbers on. Lot coverage and, and what size homes are on what size lots and what does that look like on a block that you may be familiar with? And the other is just having a, a, a visual of what size lots currently exist. In South Burlington and where are they? Are there any lots that are under six thousand square feet and where are they? How many are between, between ten and twelve that would be yes or no subdivisible? Um, or are fourteen and, and would be subdividable up to seven thousand square feet? Yeah, there's some of those things would be more citywide. So there's two, two things we're talking about. One is that citywide map of lot sizes. And the other is more of an example of like, this is how a block looks.
Okay, and, and maybe even just pulling these back out so in our packets.
Yep.
For visual.
Yep.
But Donna?
One thing that we haven't talked about, that if you're going to do that exercise with existing lots, it, it would be really interesting to know. Um, what the changes in um, uh, number of parking spaces um, per, per dwelling unit. What effect that has on the lot size? And I mean. If anything, I'd, I'd like to see that more of the lot can be used for some amenity space rather than parking. Uh, and then also, I mean, how does that change the character of the street itself? Um, because on-street parking, when you have multifamily, on-street parking is more important. Um, I think, well, on-street parking is, as soon as you start reducing the number of parking spaces, on-street parking becomes more important. And how does that change our street standards? Um, because right now we've got really narrow, re- really narrow streets that don't allow for a lot of street parking. Um, which is, you know, street parking is a pretty urban thing and.
A- and a substantial policy change too, because we have overnight parking ban currently, which uh, in the winter.
Right, so, uh, you know, I'd like, and especially because I, I noticed there was that one comment in the. Um, city plan that creating higher density is going to reduce the number of uh, traffic, amount of traffic. I don't know, Michael, if that was one of the things you brought up, because it, it's true. I don't. I don't think by itself higher density does reduce traffic volume. If anything, it increases it. Um, unless you have a. You know, un- unless it's a really well-integrated um, transit system of some kind. That, that allows people to um, take advantage of, of combining. You know, combining more, more um, trips. Uh, so I don't know, all these things, I mean, it just, in my mind, it's just, it's like, wow, we're, we're creating more traffic here. But we're saying we're going to not create traffic. So I'm, I, I'm having a lot of trouble resolving that.
Me too, especially what's being built here. Um, just on market and garden streets. Large number of cars, I hope that will generate the interest in much more. Um, ne- neighborhood commercial um. Businesses here, when all these people are living here. Right now, we don't have, there's not a market for it, but when they're here, I'm hoping that City Center will start to become City Center.
Well, I'm hoping since a lot of it's UVM related, that they're going to run their buses over this way. I guess we're going to have a problem if they don't.
Do, do you want to, uh, do you want us to answer your questions before we could go?
Yeah, with that.
Um, or you want us to write to you?
No. It's, it's, it's only because I need to take direction from the commission and not from the commissioners. And it's a little bit of a semantic difference.
Okay, maybe we could jump ahead to the questions.
Yeah, so um, a couple of things that have been talked about a little bit, I think. Um, we have some direction on what we need for additional data and we are going to be working through that um, for the next meeting. Um, uses we'll bring up in the next, in the next meeting or so. Um, site amenities, we can skip that for now. Um. I would, I would love to actually spend some time on the inclusionary zoning. If you have sort of mental capacity today to talk about some of that, um, I outlined in the memo what the Affordable Housing Committee has. Um, discussed, discussed at their previous meeting and, um, and recommended. Um, yeah, Duncan.
Look, I just want to back up real quick. Um, recommended uses, is there a. Incise chart where we could see all those in the different, different districts and what's going to be rolled into these districts? Where, where could we, is there anywhere?
There's a chart that we sent, that I sent out in December. Um, then like December twentieth or so, Donna's got it right there.
December twentieth packet. It is, okay, alright.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, it wasn't. It was after.
Follow up, my, follow up memo.
The follow-up after the packet. I can send it to you tomorrow as well if, yeah.
Well, I was also saying, when it's on our agenda, it should be in the packet for that meeting.
Yeah.
So, well, but yeah.
Yep.
Also send it to you now.
Yes, yeah, and I'll, I will resend it to everyone else.
Yeah, I want to read this whole thing finally.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, would, I mean, do you want to just touch on the I O? I think that might be an easy one to just.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, should the housing be removed and allowed use in I O? It seems like it would either need to go to the five units an acre, which is pretty giantly different than what's allowed now. It's one. One unit per three acres right now.
It was one unit per, it is one unit per three acres in our LDRs. It is functionally. Five units an acre now because it is served by water and sewer and Act um, forty-seven is in effect.
Okay, so it got superseded already.
Right, so, so our recommendation on this, I think, would be to, at least for the short to medium term, remove it. Because I think what, as a, as a sort of a factual matter, at one unit per three acres. The highest and best use of that entire area is industrial. But when that flips to five units an acre, you might start to get a property owner who says, oh, sure, what a good idea. Let me put some housing in there and um, once housing's there, it's there. And that changes the entire character of the commercial industrial. That can't be pulled backwards for several generations. So I think we would recommend that it not be permitted. And then if you want to reopen that at some future time, eh, you know, carefully thinking about where that would be to go for it at that time. But I think it's a, it's, it's an, falls under the very unintended consequences of S one hundred. That this sort of oddity of one unit per three acres.
I, I hear what you're saying, but let me be the devil's advocate. We do also want workforce housing close to employment centers, which is. What, where they would be. So we're, we're losing something that we want. Um.
But are we, do we, are we losing industrial and employment opportunities by. Having housing come in and therefore those uses can't.
Is there a way to tie it to those industrial operations?
Right.
If it gets removed, if it gets removed for the time being. It gives us time to figure out how to deal with the issue properly. And avoid having something happen there that preempts our being able to. Choose how we want it to be done.
Yeah, I know, um, um, I understand. I was just, yeah.
Playing devil's advocate.
Mudd- muddying the waters for us. Now, make sure we don't, we don't forget that one of our objectives was. To get workforce housing close to employment.
Well, you could, you could just wait till somebody comes in and says, oh, by the way, this is, we'd like to add some housing here. And then, and then kind of have a real pace that you can figure out, okay, how would this work? Because trying to imagine how that would work is really hard, you know, if you don't have a specific instance.
Um, we've had. There is a specific instance already taking place.
There is.
Um, so along Heinsberg Road, there, there, i- it's already a bit of an oddity where there's three homes on a ten-acre parcel.
The rights came before you last year.
Right, so they have um, come to the DRB to add a, a few more homes to that property under the. New S one hundred provision. That one happens to have already been residential and so some of what we're talking about is, is less dramatic than the other circumstances, but. It is um, there, there is a circumstance where the, where that is taking place and we could. See one where it's not quite so, you know, on the edge where it just happens to be right in the middle where there isn't housing. And then I think that's where you get a potential challenge in the future of you've now got. Five or ten homes sitting in the middle of something that would, was slated to be the next FedEx kind of thing. And then there's.
But, that's fine. I mean, we just need, need to be sure we'll come back to it. Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's a yes, remove it for now.
Yeah.
Okay, so affordable housing.
Yes. I'm just taking a last note from the other one. Um, so I put in your memo, um, the recommendations that the uh, Affordable Housing Committee. Um, discussed at their previous meeting. Um, there, as I, as I stated at a, at a. In the memo and at a prior, prior meeting, I think, um, it is not going to be sustainable um, for both. The current inclusionary zoning requirements in our LDRs and the state-level affordable housing development bonuses to. Apply, be, be applied in the same municipality. Um, it just. Creates a lot of problems on how do they layer and how do you, you know, you qualify for one, but the other one's mandatory, but some is optional and it's a, it's a mess. So, um, we were talking about, the Affordable Housing Committee talked about what to change in the current inclusionary zoning. Um, structure to get both, the, the state level program is purely optional. Um, so take some of the state level um, bonuses and benchmarks and make them mandatory at certain levels in South Burlington. So.
What do you mean the state program is?
It's optional.
Optional, you mean, no municipality doesn't have to have any inclusionary zoning?
So at, correct, first of all, correct. But second of all, the, the state has set up a, a definition of an affordable housing development. That gets a certain bonus, um, is required to have a certain bonus. No developer is required to be an affordable housing development. They're, they're not required to meet those thresholds. But if they choose to meet the thresholds, then the state requires the municipality to allow them to get, to have those bonuses of an additional floor and additional density. Um, so, yeah.
But we had a prior conversation about this and at that con- at that meeting or conversation, we said. To the extent that we can, let's adopt the states, the state.
Yes.
Um, rules, um, so that we don't have two sets of.
Yes.
Right, okay. So the state rules are an incentive-based program.
Yep.
If you meet this X, Y, Z threshold, then you get a whole bunch of benefits. And I think what you're, you're describing is matching our requirements to either be or be easily divisible numbers of.
Yep.
That same.
And the bonuses, the bonus structure as well, some of it.
Every, yes.
So have those things be the same instead of getting different percentages at different unit numbers and the, the two systems not line up.
The five and the twenty.
Right, but what South Burlington can choose to do is can choose to give the same bonuses, like an additional story. At a lower number of affordable units, but also to make that lower number, number of required units be required. So you can, you can, we could, you could go all the way to requiring every development be in a, a defined affordable housing development. We are not recommending that. It's not financially feasible for a lot of um, buildings, especially very small ones, because it has to be five units. So anything on the lower number of, of units um, would have to have five and it becomes um.
Of which one would be, if it's twenty percent, one would.
No, it has to be five. It has to be five or twenty percent, whichever is greater. So if you build a five-unit building and you want it to be under the optional state program, all five would have to be affordable.
If we adopted this.
Right, if you adopted that structure completely. What we're saying is you could, there are different ways to apply the same bonuses. And have a similar unit breakdown where then you, South Burlington makes it required. But may, the required number of units is likely less than the state's optional number to get it, but it's. It's required, so then everybody has to do it instead of it being optional.
Yeah.
I feel like I wrote it better than I'm saying it, so. I feel like I wrote it better than I'm saying it, so. If anybody has questions about what I wrote, that's probably more effective at this point in the night.
The answer is yes.
Right now.
Currently twelve.
So, which is, I think, too many.
To be mandatory.
Yeah, five or more, in, in other words, it kicks in at five.
No.
No.
Well, that's what, that's what Michael's suggesting.
Yeah.
Oh, you're suggesting.
He's, he's not ma- stating that that's what it is, he's saying that's what he wanted.
The, the two, the two are very, that's one, one important thing. But I think more important in all this, and I've spoken to, well, Sandy Dooley for sure, we shouldn't be building single family ho- homes for uh in, in the affordable, in inclusionary zoning. Cause the, we know that it, they can't be built by the developers for the price we need to match. Whereas multi, we can get there.
So let's, let's stick to the program here, Michael.
Okay.
We specifically tasked the Affordable Housing Committee to give us a recommendation, so let's just hear the recommendation. And then if you have a different recommendation, we can do that second, if that's okay. Just to make sure we know what the recommendation was and how it works first.
So to summarize, they're recommending that the threshold for, in South Burlington would be reduced from a twelve unit down to ten units. But that's, that's the first change that they would be recommending is that anytime somebody's building ten units, it'd be required to be affordable. They're re- recommending that that be ten percent
Yep.
of buildings in that, uh, of, of units.
Yep.
And then when you hit twenty units in a project, that it would jump to twenty percent become, has to become affordable. And that matches the incentive base program at the state where.
It almost matches, it would be twenty five for twenty percent, but.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay.
So that's everything that would be required. So this would basically be saying, this is the inclusionary part that we'd be requiring.
Yeah.
It's not actually required by S one hundred, it's, it's us adopting inclusionary zoning to their framework.
Right, so all that S one hundred does is, S one hundred does not require a municipality to have inclusionary zoning whatsoever. What it requires is that projects that meet the incentive based program at the state level of this, um, uh, twenty percent of, of um dwellings or five total dwellings are affordable. Automatically get these local zoning bonuses. So we're trying to match up those two pieces.
Basically, you get, you would get the local zoning bonuses, but you're required to do it at a lower number. So you're, you're required to do it at ten instead of being optional. And then, but you're required to do a lower percentage of your units until you get into a larger building. Um.
And then once you get to twenty five, when the state incentivizes this, the local mandates.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And this also wants it to be perpetual, not for thirteen, fifteen years.
Yes, the state is, you, to be an affordable housing development, the restriction only has to be for fifteen years. And the Affordable Housing Committee um wanted to keep what we currently have, which is perpetual affordability.
Yeah, so our first question is still about how it works, what the recommendation is.
Yep, well, I, I think a pretty basic part of the recommendation is the, it allowing you to do an extra level.
Yep.
And so I have, most, my, my questions both have to do with that. Um, one is, I, um, if you're gonna allow that additional level, um, how many problems is that gonna generate when you're trying to do it as infill uh in existing area? Um, I know in Shelburne, it's a pretty well-publicized case, which absolutely shot down affordable housing because the neighboring street were single family homes. And they're like, absolutely not, wouldn't, wouldn't allow them to build a three story. Or, I'm not sure it was three story or just two story. But it was just a, it was a, a higher, a taller building uh that was gonna be adjacent to this residential neighborhood. And they completely said, it, it completely got shot down um with the D R B.
Maybe that's the reason that the language is in the statute.
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, and that was my question, it's like, okay, if we're allowing higher, you know, building health, um, taller building heights throughout the, throughout the city. Um, is there a protection that says, okay, these units aren't gonna get shot down because of that additional level?
Well, I mean, it's the state law that whatever we set as the height, something that qualifies as an affordable housing development gets one more story, period.
Well, it seems like in some ways, in some ways it gives, you know, neighboring properties, like one more reason to hate it. You know, which I don't agree with that, but you know, this is sort of the practical reality of people not wanting a taller unit and, you know, misreading, misunderstanding what affordable means. The, the second issue is my favorite, elevators. Um, I'm wondering, Paul, if you've had that discussion with our, our, our fire inspector to find out whether we can do three story buildings without elevators.
Uh, we are currently in scheduling mode, so yes, we've reached out, but we've not talked to them yet.
Cause that's a pretty critical one, because I don't think, um, doing a smaller building is, it's not gonna be very affordable if you have to put in elevators.
So a couple of things, um, first, the, if a developer decides to do twenty percent of their units or five, whichever is greater, so five for anything under twenty five or twenty percent over twenty five, they have to get an extra story. That's the state law, um, we can't do anything about that extra story that is granted to them. Um, applying allowance for an extra story at this lower level of the ten to nineteen units and, and cha- taking that framework and, oop, sorry, and applying it lower, um, wouldn't have that state statute protection. But, um, there, I think, are other opportunities. What, what it, what the state's structure says is you get um additional density, which we're moving away from. Um, so we need to work a little bit on what else you could get. So a developer in a situation like in Shelburne would, would have to be savvy enough to know, like, maybe I can't cash in on the extra floor to make this work, but I, I can use these other incentives that are, are put into it. We've, um, the Affordable Housing Committee um discussed things like reduced fees for, for app, uh, for the application fees or impact fees or other fee, maybe not impact fees, but other things that the city can do to make it financially more feasible. Um, we can do some things different that Michael sort of alluded to earlier about lot size, um, with the T D Rs thing. He's, he mentioned with T D Rs, but you could do changes in the minimum lot size. Um, there are other things that are functional proxies for density that you could get. So there's, are likely situations, like yes, an additional story, um, may not be the best con, in the context that it's being built. But there would be other incentives that a developer would have to make the decision to, do you push it all the way to the biggest thing that you could put under the, under the regulations? Or do you pull it back in order to get your development um approved, which is something that developers deal with um all the time?
Duncan?
Yeah, I, I have a question, um, the paragraph you say, um, could require twenty percent of the units to be affordable, ten units, but then choose to have the extra floor apply at ten units, twenty to twenty five units. After twenty five units, any building would be state qualified.
Hmm.
It, I, I guess I, I don't quite understand, so i- if, if you've got five units and those are all affordable.
Yep.
You get an extra floor.
Yes. Under the state statute. If you decide, if you decided and it was, you could financially pull it off to build a five unit building.
You would get an extra.
That was one hundred percent affordable, you would get a full story above whatever the regulation is in your district.
So then, but then you say, but then choose to have the extra floor apply, that implies that it's.
That's the, at the municipal level. So if you, so the state thresholds are higher, we're talking about moving the thresholds lower. So you would get the bonuses at lower percentages and lower numbers of units. Um, but because you're moving it lower than the state requirement, you could choose to have the extra floor apply at different. You can make a choice about where that, that lower than state level requirement lands.
Ten units, ten percent of ten units.
That, yeah, the Affordable Housing Committee discussed, um, ten, requiring, requiring in affordable housing at ten units and having the number of units be ten percent.
But that does automatically give you that extra floor, cause it doesn't qualify for the state percentage, okay, alright.
Correct, but South Burlington could choose or not choose to give you that extra floor at that number.
I was wondering where the. Choose, okay.
Yep.
Okay, um, Pauline Ross?
Has, um, are developers taking advantage of that?
Of the new S one hundred, not that I know of, I don't think anything's been applied for under, since July that would um apply for that. I will say that Tom Getz um was, is on the Affordable Housing Committee and was part of this conversation. Um, so while his, uh, his company Summit has not taken advantage of the state level program, as far as I'm aware, he was part of the conversation about what is financially feasible for making a development happen or not happen um, based on some of these requirements.
Hasn't anybody gotten an extra uh floor in uh city center in these developments?
No, these were all applied for before um S one hundred was in.
Oh, so this is, um, since then?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Do you, um, so as staff, do you feel like the recommendation from the Affordable Housing Committee would meet the um, requirements of the bonus program? Or do you think we need some additional bonus options added? Cause that, yeah, one of your questions about the fees, should fees be adjusted?
Um, the, there wasn't, there, a full discussion was not had about what could be applied as incentives. South Burlington could do whatever you want for incentives at these lower numbers. Um, we were just saying that you should have the state uh incentives as part of the structure and not have it sort of be one or the other, not have different percentages or different numbers or different heights or something apply. Um, but you are welcome to add, um, you know, waivers of requirements or, or reduced fees or smaller lots or, or, or other things that are, um, similar, but not the same.
Does the committee wanna keep talking about those components of it to save that from being at the commission level?
Not that I am aware of, that, that the conversation was finished.
At that point, you just turned.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think you answered our specific question that we had given you, so. Um, to, I guess to confirm, you have other questions about the recommendation? Or, suddenly, Michael, you maybe had a.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking we're giving up something by going from fifteen percent down to ten. And I don't know what, what the Affordable Housing Committee felt about that. But, uh, yes, it's twenty percent of, of twenty units and more, but that's kind of rare. Um, so I think we, we, it's a lost opportunity if we go down to ten percent.
But I think we're, we're requiring it at a smaller number of units, maybe that was the balance.
Michael, we could do a little data analysis. Um, I suspect that the number of projects that we get in that are between ten and twenty units total is actually quite a bit fewer than the ones that are either way smaller than that or a lot bigger than that. But we could, we could quantify that for the commission.
I know we have two big ones with Summit, but those are rather unusual.
Well, but don't forget, it's not just about buildings, so all of South Village is a project.
Hmm.
So there's three hundred and thirty units of which twenty percent would need to be affordable. It's not a building by building, it's a project by project review. So we don't get that many that are ten to twenty total, we get some.
Okay, so what, what was discussed a little bit and, and what I, what I raised is, is requiring a higher number of inclusionary units because of some of those initial costs that cost the same, whether you're building ten units or thirty units. Um, like heating systems, things like that, um, engineering, et cetera. Um, putting a higher percentage requirement on these sort of middle scale buildings could find in, make them financially infeasible and then you won't have buildings of that middle scale being built at all. You may end up with under ten unit buildings that are, the smaller unit buildings that don't require any uh affordable units being built and then only units over twenty or twenty five and not having some of that middle scale, um, building that I think really fits in with some of our, our neighborhoods and our, our areas of the city where maybe you're not looking for a hundred unit, a hundred unit buildings. But a nine unit building would be underutilizing a site, but they're just not able to make the numbers work with a higher percentage requirement in that middle number. That's really where that discussion came from, is requiring slightly less to make it all pencil out in that sort of middle scale of building.
I wanna make sure.
Any other concern is this question of cost and, um, that we, we've heard it from them and the committee has heard it from the developers who are on the committee or advising it, that single family homes is just almost impossible to, to build to that cost. And, um, multifamily homes are, uh, and more efficient land use and all the, all the other benefits. So I was wondering whether we could, um, somehow either say the multi only or somehow restrict, because I, I think we're, there's a resistance in the, in the development community to build affordable housing, single family affordable housing. And we might, we might have an easier time of getting people to build more than ten units uh rather than trying to avoid it if, uh, we're talking about multifamily and, and that, that they can meet the cost targets of the, of the, of inclusionary zoning.
I guess what I would say is, I think you've stated why you don't need to regulate it. Because if the money doesn't work out, they're not gonna build an affordable single family home anyway. Um, they're going to build it in a multifamily situation because it's the only way for them to make the, the finances work. Um, so I don't think, that's just my opinion, is, is the economics will drive that instead of it necessarily having to be something that South Burlington says you can't build it as an affordable, single family home. Cause what I would not want to do is say, to have something like that and then have an unanticipated consequence where a, a whole site is developed and maybe there's a few triplexes and a cup, and a, and a fourplex and a something and then a, a cottage court or something. And they decide that some of the cottage court units are going to be the affordable units. The cost of the project as a whole penciled out, but they just decided for, for diversity of bedroom sizes and of housing types that one of, one or more of the cottages is what's, would be the permanently affordable unit. I wouldn't want to prevent that from happening, um, so I think that the economics of it prevents someone from doing like a whole field of, of single family homes, um, and that we still leave the door open for people to make, make a small home or cottage, they're assigned, um, of perpetually affordable if, if the rest of it all works out.
I have a follow up on that, I mean, and first off, Laurie, thank you for sharing that article, the New York Times article on the tiny houses in Austin. I thought that was really, um, informative and they were really beautiful and just such a really nice, um, layout and idea and I guess.
I think that only went just to us and to you. We haven't sent it.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize it didn't go, I was looking on my phone.
I was following instructions.
No, he did follow instructions, I just haven't, haven't gotten to.
Well, in any case, we'll, we'll send that around, cause I, I.
We can send that around.
You're supposed to just send it to. Yeah, I'm the one who's supposed to distribute it, I think, um. So my point is, I just wanna make sure of this language, um, you are consistently using the word building. And I think with our current inclusionary zoning, it's not necessarily about buildings. It's more about units in the development.
That's correct.
Which might be a mix of building types and building sizes, so. So when you use the word building, it's more just about units in the development?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking of it very simplistically as like, if you built a building with X units, it, the math works out sort of way without thinking of how it's all chopped up.
Be a mix of.
Three building.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Get that out there, it was specific.
Yep.
And I have just a, a logistic question, um, with what the committee has recommended. Um, if we go with that and it's, um, ten to nineteen, ten percent, I'm building fifteen units. How does that work?
You'd have to decide if you're rounding up or down.
Well.
Who does the decide?
The regulation.
The regulations decide. You, the, we'd have to write into the regulations what gets, when you round up or down. Um, if at fifteen you round up or if at fifteen you round down, that would be something that has to be written in.
Um, I think you can figure that out and put it, recommendation based on what makes sense. Um, do you, um, any other questions or comments on this? Gonna see if we have any audience, uh, Ryan, and then we'll see about online too, looks like we might have some.
Yeah, Ryan Doyle, I.
Yeah, Ryan Doyle, I have two comments or questions. One is um, and maybe this is more of a question for staff. Is there any kind of language? We can add that creates a legal benefit to developers who are including some amount of affordable units in their project so that we don't have this situation where all the neighbors can so easily coalesce and shut down a project now that it suddenly has an extra floor that if that's possible, that seems like that could be incentive enough without having uh as many requirements. Just the first comment.
Um, just just quickly, it's it's not it's not necessarily that it it's it's the fact that something goes in front of a volunteer body of residents that then can make decisions on some discretionary things that ends up putting political pressure on on something. Um, so it depends on how tightly the regulations are written. Um, I don't think necessarily there's any way to sort of provide immunity from neighbors opposing a project. That's not a a neighbor has a right to come in and oppose a project.
Yeah.
Um, so coming in and saying uh, you know, because you're doing affordable units, then you get to you get to do this is would override things like of other considerations that the neighbor might have about an access road or about something else that is a concern, not necessarily related to the affordability, but related to the, you know, site layout or something like that. It would be it would be a difficult thing to thread.
Gotcha.
Um, that said, um, and we don't, we don't have the authority to um determine appeal rights, which is, you know, where where they really get long. That's entirely the purview of state statute. Um, S one hundred does however specifically state that um an appeal shall not include character of the area if the project has a residential component that includes affordable housing. So it is prohibited now under state law.
Nice.
To make that argument that you're diminishing the character of the area when it includes affordable housing. So the statutes have addressed this. We don't have the authority to modify that.
That's awesome. The the second thing is um we we control our um fire codes. Is that correct to some degree? In the city?
We don't control what's in the codes. We control a bit of what parts of the codes we enforce and inspect for.
So it's a state level thing?
We I'm I just, I guess I'm trying to sit stay that you're not, we South Burlington doesn't pick and choose from the sort of state fire code. It's it's sort of in or out and it applies or doesn't apply. Um, so South Burlington, for example, it certain certain um codes do not apply to single family homes where in Burlington they do. So that was decisions that the municipalities made. It wasn't necessarily like line by line in the codes.
So our authority there is we are delegated the state fire marshal's authority to do their codes. And we can choose if we want to add to it by say doing single two family homes, which is not under the state fire code. And um we can potentially add to something, but it's it's a it's an agreement with the state where we're doing what the fire marshal does in Williston. It's not a separate thing. It's only a sort of three page agreement, not a uh our own codes.
Gotcha. Um, so this might be um out of the question in the short term, but long term thinking about um in the US most apartment buildings require two stairs once they're over a certain size. Um, and that's usually around two stories and a certain number of units. Um, that's not the case in most of Europe though, and they don't have more fire deaths relative to us. Actually, we still have more than a lot of those countries. So cities like Seattle have actually taken that back and now they can have one staircase for a multi-unit building up to six stories. That's not a large full block sized building, but the difference with something like that is um apartments in a building like that tend to have always two or three uh sides that have windows on them as opposed to just one or two. Uh, they tend to be much narrower, but economical because they don't have two staircases. They don't have an elevator. Um, and uh I think they've already built their first one in Seattle. It looks pretty good. And long term, that's um another way to utilize smaller lots in a cost effective way. Just to like plant that on people's um not agenda, but to be keeping in mind for the future. Thank you.
Um, any other comments on this section? Okay, how are we feeling about the recommendation?
It looks like uh.
Darrell, go ahead. Yeah.
He's actually not on this section and um I want to say the Affordable Housing talked about this very rigorously. We we like this position. So, but I wanted to ask something about a previous and if you want to wait, it's just you were talking about it earlier and I couldn't get your attention and it's workforce housing.
Go go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so I'm sorry, go off topic, but you said there isn't anything going on now. I was just at the Economic Development Committee meeting before your meeting tonight. And they are asking, why hasn't the Planning Commission uh done anything about the request by OnLogic for workforce housing on their property? And they said, we think that's still sitting there, but uh and I didn't, I mean, I didn't say anything, cause what do I know? But I just thought I'd pass that along because that is something that we all worry about. Getting companies to come here because of this housing issue. And they said, there's another one coming. You know, the Paul probably knows about this. Maybe you all do, the whole tech hub thing. They are going to want to come in with a workforce housing recommendation. So anyway, OnLogic, where are we?
I thought it was with that committee.
It is.
That committee is supposed to be working on it.
On OnLogic?
Yes.
Yeah, we tasked the Economic Development Committee to work on that issue, so.
Oh, wow, there's a real mismatch of communication.
We will um.
We'll follow up with a lot.
Staff liaison um and their chair and follow up on that, but that was our understanding.
I think um Darrell and what may have happened is that discussion was brought to the um the EDC last, not last December of twenty-two.
Right.
December of twenty-two and January of twenty-three. Um, and then we immediately asked them for feedback and for um hosting of city plan related community conversations. So they discussed it for a meeting um or part of a meeting and then we've sort of asked them to switch gears and do something else because we needed to move the city plan things forward. Um, it sounds like there was a miscommunication about them having finished that work or not. Um, and we'll get back in touch with their staff and and make that clear.
Because this is coming up now with the tech hub. And they said, oh, how can we do talk about it with tech hub when we can't even get an answer? They didn't say. We haven't.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
Thank you. We're glad you.
Thanks, Darrell.
Um, Evan, were you trying to speak up as well?
No, I just observed Darrell and raising.
Oh, good. Thank you. Yeah, I had missed. Um, Vince? No, Vince Vince is saying he's all set, so um. Any thoughts or feedback on this? I mean, it seems like they've.
Put into this and it seems like it's a pretty reasonable um yeah, set of set of recommendations.
So are you um just so I'm totally clear, is the commission feeling generally comfortable with what the Affordable Housing Committee has proposed?
I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads and I think the last question of should fees be adjusted or if there's other incentives like I don't know that we have enough information to evaluate that yet. I don't know if that's something that maybe once it's written up or as it's getting drafted.
We can also do some um brainstorm on the staff end about what that may look like. Um, cause at the sta- at the state level, um you get a density bonus, whereas it's not exactly the same situation. Um, if we're moving, if we don't have density in the same way, um but I I would think that we would want a functional equivalent and and we'll do a little work on on what that may look like um for for these buildings.
Yeah.
And developments.
And then I guess one, one thing it ki- we kind of skirted around this issue a little bit in this discussion was the number of stories and we not that long ago were quite proactive in increasing the number of stories really for this exact reason. And I'm wondering that because we had already increased stories and now we're giving them a story if we're creating like a weird height issue and some, at least in this district one, um makes me wonder if we need to kind of circle back on the heights in the the yellow areas, the the areas where we're still calling low density because we'd already bumped them up to try to address this issue. Now we're gonna bump them up again. Um feels like maybe something we need to like at least circle back on and making sure we're not winding up with.
So something just and that I.
Crazy skyscrapers in like our most rural areas.
Right, so just to note in the the sort of one district, uh we are not how we didn't list medium or large multifamily as an allowed use. Um, so those a large skyscraper would not be allowed anyway. I mean, unless you somehow did multi-floor units, then you only had four, but you made it ten stories high. I don't know. Um, you could, I guess you could do that. But it's it's just some of some of these things are controlled a little bit by the other restrictions of of not being allowed to have the the larger multi-unit buildings in the one district. Um, so it's it's sort of looking at how these things play together um and how they play out on the ground. Uh, I think that's definitely something that the commission can can talk through again and we can, we can discuss if anyone has any questions about how these things will interplay. And I think um it's it's difficult to talk about all of this in theory. Um, and I think both having sort of that block example of different sized lots and what does that mean with setbacks and what does it actually look like? But also when we get to the point, I think we're at the point now where I can begin really working on some actual language. Um, well, that'll be easier to for people to digest and really point out like, does is this consistent with that or I don't like this word or I don't like how that prohibits something else like, um, I think maybe that will make the discussion uh more straightforward when we actually are all working from the same, the same piece of language and I'm really hoping for that to be at least partially in the next meeting. Um, depending on all the discussion about uses and and everything else. So that's where we're moving forward to. Hopefully that'll that'll be easier to sort of digest and everybody be on the same page with discussions when it's some of the language is a little more firm to be reacting to as well.
Okay.
The tables right now really limit heights in especially in both one and two.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they do. You just look at that last comment says four stories and then if you're adding a story. So I know that you said it's a mismatch.
It's a it's a it's a strange mish- mismatch and Paul and I have had a chance to have about a ten minute conversation about it um before this meeting. We will have further conversations about it. I don't, just me personally as Kelsey, not as representing anything. Um, not a big fan of having both height limitations and sort of this prescription of stories and roof lines and things. Um, but that's something that we will Paul, we'll work through as staff and then we'll um discuss with you all when we get, when we come back.
There's a theoretical way to get four stories in twenty-eight feet if your lot has a precise backward slope. But it is a um, it has probably more unintended consequences of people thinking that they can build a four-story building and then learning that it's only one percent of circumstances that would be eligible. So there's a way to simplify it.
So that's really my point. I don't want someone to see this number four here and then know that they can get one more above the maximum and then all of a sudden think they can get five. It's it's just so I we don't need to get further into it just as a flag.
There is one issue that we haven't really talked about here. I think it 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 kind of was referred to all these overlay districts and the the one thing that bothered me a little bit is the idea of view corridors disappearing potentially with these um in increased building heights and coverages, cause there's not a lot of them, but there's a few places in the cities that with, you know, view corridors that are worth preserving. And how does this affect that? You know, I Spear Street, a little that one little section of Dorset Street, you know, looking toward Mount Mansfield. Um, basically a lot of Spears just from Spear Street looking toward the lake.
So a lot just.
I'm just, you know, worried that we start developing like a lot of lot coverage and before long you have no view corridor anymore.
So just to remind everybody that a lot of what you're talking about, and we didn't actually get a chance to show the map, would be that one district, um and the one district does not allow multifamily larger than a fourplex as as proposed. And so none of the inclusionary or the affordable housing bonuses would apply. So you would still have the same height restrictions that are currently, except for if you did five and you got the state qualification.
Because it's not by building. So if you did twenty-five home, single family homes, you'd still be in affordable housing. And then a building that had an inclusionary unit there would be eligible.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Well, it's unlikely that the the best views in the whole city are gonna be the inclusionary units, right? It would be nice, but.
There are lots of interesting um tentacles to S one hundred and thinking about how the anything to do with the affordable housing floor bonus interacts with our scenic views is a new one that we will think about.
Well, yeah, yeah, cause it would be one story above. Oh, goodness. Michael.
Yeah, just something Paul said, could you clarify for me? You know, there's the extra forty percent and an extra story or the extra story is part of that extra forty percent?
The and is the state's optional program. So if you do the five units or twenty percent, whichever is greater and you qualify for the state definition, you get and you get both. The question for South Burlington is if you go below the state's threshold and make things and or make things, well, if you go below the state's threshold, you don't need to necessarily apply both.
Right, but if somebody meets the state threshold.
Yes.
They get both.
Yes.
Automatically.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Last thing I wanted, I just wanted to say that on the uh number four on the interim zoning is I think anything we can come up with, and I'm glad that you guys are gonna brainstorm it, but I think we should be pretty creative about what we can do to help create bonuses or benefits for people doing the inclusionary zoning.
Yep, that's a conversation that um we've sort of barely started having and we can have more and there's um, there's opportunities in sort of the traditional ways of incentives in the buildings and things, but there's a lot of other opportunities that make it more financially viable or reduce some of your other requirements in a certain way, or there there's other things that can be done for the city to sort of clear the way a little bit without necessarily having the building change dramatically from what we otherwise regulate.
Look forward to hearing that.
Me too.
Um, okay, so we are already at nine thirty. We haven't gotten your last two questions, but they are a.
That's fine. We can put that to next.
And there wasn't a lot of text to for us to think about ahead of time, so maybe that's something.
That was intentionally sort of, here are the things that we we you will need to answer at some point, um but not the focus of the meeting today.
Okay, so let's move on to item six, which is our CCRPC UP WP requests. And it's nicely broken down into the three or four different categories of project types.
I don't have too too much to add from what's in the memo, other than to say that um you'll see under the uh third category of uh letters of support that the RPC is discussing, working with a few different towns um on some energy related components that um we could be a contributor to. There might be a little bit of overlap between that and some of the ones that we're recommending put forward and we are meeting this Thursday to um sort of streamline that and make sure that we're not double asking for the same thing, but um uh otherwise, we're really here to answer any questions that you have. We tried to answer each of the questions that you have from the last time you discussed it and made um modifications as under those.
Assuming we've all read it.
Yes.
Then I move to recommend that the city council submit the list of CCRPC Unified Planning Project as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just a little bit. On the parking management.
Can you turn your mic on just um?
Sorry.
Sorry. A couple of comments on the parking management study. Just would like to ensure that that's not just vehicle parking, that it's also dealing with other forms of transportation parking. You know, our new developments have pretty good bike parking, but existing existing stores and particular shopping centers and stuff like that, there's minimal right now. It would be really nice to include bicycle parking in that parking study. Wouldn't be that hard to add, I don't think.
So are you thinking that, so this study will largely focus on either the public sector on-street parking or potentially partnering with private sector entities that want to participate with their off-street parking and how they might want to charge for that. And, and there's sort of a whole science behind how much do you charge on-street versus off-street? Are you thinking about that including something around, say, bike parking that would not be on the zoning end of it, but would be on the sort of participating in a district kind of you know, would they want to have ten racks or installed at their property as a voluntary action? Is that, is that sort of what you're thinking about or are you thinking more regulatory?
Well, I mean, we're talking about center city only here, which is unfortunate, but but yeah, the center city includes the mall. It includes a lot of areas that are existing. And, you know, are unlikely to get developed, you know, quickly. And there's just this real lack of bicycle parking, except at city, at city hall. It's like the, the best place to park in center city, but is anywhere else you go in center city, there is no bicycle parking. Maybe some of the, the, the apartment buildings maybe are putting some in. But it's just not really apparent that there's any bike parking anywhere else. I mean, you, you, you kind of find places, but if you have more than one or two bikes, forget it. It's just not, you know, and you don't really wanna lock yourself to a tree. And, you know, there's, there's just no place to park a bike. And when you have an expensive e-bike, it's kind of critical to have a secure place to park it.
Let's come under Article eleven, uh, not eleven C, um, sorry. Fifteen, somewhere.
So, so there is currently from a regulatory side, there is a requirement that any existing property that comes in for a site plan amendment, the first time that they come in, they have to meet half of the minimums that exist. And then the second time they come in, they have to do this, the rest of it. So the U-Mall, for example, in the last year had to upgrade their entire property to the current standard for, for new development for.
Is it in Article fifteen?
Thirteen, I believe. But I think if, if you were interested for this project, this project is, is really not about zoning. It's about management of parking. So developing a fee structure for on-street parking and potentially for private lots that wanted to participate, if it, we could certainly include with it looking at a strategy for public right-of-way enhancement of bike racks. So within certain street rights of way, if that's what you're talking about, I think if we are moving into the category of private and regulating, that's a really different project than what this is because this is not as, this is not a regulatory project. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, it, it does. It does. I mean, I just, I just think that if you have to wait for each individual business owner to put in bike parking, it's gonna take a really long time for it to happen. You know, and perhaps then in the public, in the public area makes more sense.
Where they are in Amsterdam. We can just incentivize, tell people who have bikes, only shop at that place. Cause they've got bike racks. But seriously, I think businesses could be persuaded because
So that's, that's one of them. The, the other comment I had about the EV deployment plan. And cause, and, and I actually in LinkedIn put a comment and I had like dozens and dozens of comments back about being really specific about, you know, what, what capacity those EV chargers need to be for, you know, like someplace where somebody's gonna be for maybe an hour or two, might need a lot faster recharging than, you know, an overnight situation for a hotel. And, you know, hotels are like pretty sad around here, you know, there just aren't a lot. There just aren't a lot of recharging stations in Vermont at hotels, which really stinks. But, you know, condominiums, I think there's a big push to get them into condominiums, which is great. And then places where people are, who traveling through on the interstate. You know, there's a few, but they're very few. You know, even in Burlington, how few there are around here for interstate travel and inner-city travel. It's you know, so I think you wanna be, be sure to cover all the categories there, not just, you know, not just residential, not just you know, people who are driving to work and stuff, cause there's, there's several situations and, you know, I'm glad I have another car still because I
I think that's a great suggestion to add in the, the level of charging essentially. As one of the strategies in there, I do wanna be clear that in this one, this is specifically to publicly accessible. There's a whole other project if, from the Climate Action Plan about how do we get EV charging into private
Right.
Circumstances, this would be for, for, for public use. It might be on private land, but for public use.
Yeah, the public use is
That's what I thought.
What?
Thanks, Siri.
That was Siri.
She a voting member?
Siri's not voting.
Being an EV driver, I can say that level two chargers are pretty useless in public places. Unless I'm going, unless I'm going to a place of work where my car is gonna be for a while. But if I'm a shopper or a traveler, a level two charger rarely do people go and leave their car in one place for four hours. And a ten-minute charge on a level two charger is pretty, pretty much a waste of time.
Right.
So when you're thinking about that, I just wanna mention that for, since this is, this is for public.
Where there might be an intersect is where public is provided in residential areas where it might be used overnight. So I, that might be an exception to it. I, I've seen that in Montreal and Ottawa and some other places where there's on-street versions of it that are really meant to serve the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
And then, and then it is the overnight type of parking, but good point on the travel.
But that I still even think of as being residential. As opposed to travel through. But so in a lot of places you go and they have level two chargers and it's like I'm going into shop, I'm not gonna bother to plug in because it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference.
Okay, so we're amending the last sentence to include charging type.
Yep.
Yep. And then the last comment I had was the Patch and Road Bike Ped Study. That absolutely has to be coordinated with Burlington. Because, you know, you could put the nicest, we actually have much better bike facilities on the Burlington side. Even now, just because we've got a wide road. As soon as you get into Burlington, you've got potholes, narrow cars parked on the street. It's an incredibly dangerous situation as soon as you cross the border into Burlington. I forgot what the name of that street is.
Barrett and Chase, I think, right?
But it's the, they at least have a sidewalk. So they have different, they have different facilities.
Well, yeah, but it doesn't do a bicycle any good. You know, the pedestrian facilities may be better, but the, but the bicycle facilities are incredibly dangerous there. There's always potholes on that section. And that's been brought up in a bike ped meeting too, and how we really need to coordinate with Burlington on, on that.
So a couple of options on that front. One, we can certainly include Burlington in our work. If the question is to become a multi-community study, then that probably means pulling it this year and putting it in next year. Because Burlington, unless they happen to already be doing it, it's, they're, they're due in ten days. So I don't imagine that they can add that automatically, but we can, we can at a minimum coordinate with them. And they've, in other studies, really expressed interest in, in coordinating. I don't know the status today as to whether they are actively studying that area or not.
Because everybody, pretty much everybody who's using Patch and Road is using it to get into Burlington or Winuski.
Sorry, if I can just quickly, the Winuski Bridge Study from V-Trans. There's an intersection update for that Riverside, Chase, Barrett and Colchester Avenue, that's going to include separated bike lanes for a portion of it and then marked bike lanes otherwise, but there's a whole big bike head effort that V-Trade and the city of Burlington are doing with regards to that area.
Right. And Colin, did you wanna comment on that as well?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say, even given the, the Winuski Bridge replacement, it's totally disconnected from you know, as you said, like the Grove Street section to Patchen is like not good and it's not gonna be addressed. So actually, if you could, you know, shame Burlington into doing more to try and fix that section, that would be really great.
Yeah, I agree, but I, I'm not in favor of pulling it in favor of waiting for them. I feel like we need to do what Evan said, shame them into it by moving forward and, and trying to give them information about what we're doing and maybe with the RPC involved, they'll be able to facilitate that.
And, and let them know that it's been noted, that, that really abysmal situation on their side of, of the city line.
And in terms of cities coordinating on the Queen City Park bike or corridor, not, not the bridge, the study that was done to connect Route seven to, to the bike path at Burlington. That study was completed, the sections have all got costs on them. Burlington has gone ahead and funded their section. At least one of those sections, and I don't think South Burlington has. So I just thought I'd bring that up. As another place where Burlington's actually jumping ahead, so maybe we can catch up to them.
Okay, so we have one amendment. Text amendment. Are we ready to move forward? Okay, on favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye. And we got Fran voting yes online as well. So that was unanimous. We have minutes of October three and November fourteen.
Move to approve the minutes of October three and November fourteenth as written.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, on favor? And Fran voted yes online as well. So that was also unanimous. Very good. We did have some other business, both about the Burlington Planning Commission and Colchester Planning Commission. We're also in our packet for information. Anything else? I am out of town doing a leadership training during our next meeting. Duncan said he's available, so he will be chairing our next meeting. And I will hopefully bring back something exciting from the leadership training to do an even better job for you in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. So we are adjourned. Thanks.
So everyone.